All right, good morning once again. Say everyone who's come, we're gonna ask you to stand. Let's have a word of prayer. Father, we thank you, Lord, for blessing us today to be able to come out to take care of business of the county. We thank you, Lord, for all your blessings and your goodness towards us. We ask you of God as a direction now if we go into the business of the county. And we just thank you, Lord, for all your blessings upon our nation, our state, and our county. We thank you to give you the glory, honor, and praise in Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen. I pray that the reasons is applied on the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you much. We'll call out November 5th Commissioners Meeting to order. First item on our agenda would be approval of minutes from last October, first meeting.
Mr. Chairman, a correction needs to be made on 1527. I talked to Mrs. Lawrence. It's just that the last paragraph before administrative reports is that where it's sentenced to move to from the bottom. Mrs. Rainwright stated the Finance Committee is a commissioner for multiple 19 counties to be sensitive to the nation, but all counties fund ECB pages. Does that read very clear because it, and she has corrected that?
Okay. All right, any other corrections?
Yes, sir. On page 1532, we're talking about review officer. It's referred to in here several times as deputy review officer. There is no such office as deputy review officer. Either you are a review officer or you're not. And also in the first paragraph where it says to view each plaque, there should be a few more words there. Required to be submitted for review before it's recorded. Not every plaque is required.
That's on the first prayer.
In the first paragraph where it says personnel to serve as review officer to review each plaque, at that point it should say each plaque required to be submitted for review before it's recorded.
Listen, have you got that?
Yeah, just remove the word deputy.
Okay. Got that. All right, any others? Okay, if there are no other corrections, we'll call promotion to accept our October 1st Commissioners Meeting minutes as modified.
Salute.
Motion second, all favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed now. All right, next item will be agenda adjustments. And under item seven, room number seven, item eighty, want to add the under personnel board recommendations, recommendation of personnel, I'm sorry, payroll coordinator as approved by personnel board this morning. Will I make that, you can go ahead. Yes, just make that A B. A and A and A B if you want. Also on the old business, I mean on the new business, I'm sorry, on the seven, old business, also add item thirteen, the Gates County parking decision. We'll call for motion to accept the agenda as a minute. Motion second, all favor, aye?
Aye.
All opposed now. Okay, we have our first delegation. And our first delegate, citizen comment will be Mr. Oram.
Mr. Chairman, I've got mine down at the bottom too. If you've got a big agenda today and a lot of people here that we don't even know, scratch me, I'll talk at the end. Let them go home. Y'all get paid a lot of money in the city and I don't have nothing else to do.
Would you recommend us raise? Okay, we've got your scratch. Okay, Jennifer Batesmore.
How are you? I'm here to ask if there's anything that the residents of Gates County can do to get a decent grocery store here. I'm willing to do what I can do to help make that happen. It's my understanding that two years ago, the Economic Development Committee was negotiating with the store and that school store backed out from coming. Things have changed in the past two years. There are speculations that too many people work outside of the county and they would be doing their grocery shopping on their way in from work. My thoughts on that are people are tired at the end of the day and if they have the option of having a decent grocery store here, they're gonna wait and do their grocery shopping on the weekends. I feel sorry for the elderly people here in the county. You can't get, you know, don't have people to help them get to grocery stores. It doesn't have to be a big name, brand chain store. We'd be happy with a small scale, anything that's gonna provide some decent fruits and vegetables. A grocery store would provide employment opportunities for people here in the county. Back in August of this year, Family Foods in San Diego was sold to some foreigners. It's now called Discount Family Foods. Discount Family Foods has extremely high prices. They don't keep the shelves stocked. The dairy cases are there. They keep very little produce there. The fruits and vegetables that they do have are poor quality and most of the time the meats and meat case sit there until a disgusting brown color. It's just, it's bad. It's not good at all. Those foreign people, they're more interested in bringing in their flip flops and their pocketbooks and belts from China than providing us with some decent fruits, vegetables, and meats. I feel that, you know, Gates County could support a grocery store. I feel there's a desperate need for grocery store and I'm asking, you know, what we as residents can do to make it happen.
All right, well, we thank you for your requests and comments and certainly we'll take a look at that. We aren't trying to bring in economic dump in all types and take that into consideration.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
Ms. Batesmore, in the past, we have had that question many times.
I'm sure.
And we have contacted Piggly Wiggly, we've contacted Foodland, we've contacted some other sources trying to get a store here and we have not been successful. We've had them come and look and they say our population is not strong enough to support this store for what they are looking for in their profit. I know I'm a commissioner and I'm going out, this is my last month of service, and I feel like you do. I wish we could get one and I will support anything that our commissioners do in the future to try to get us one also. And I think the people of Gates County would support it as much as they can. So I want to let you know that we have been looking at this and that for many years and it's just something that has not been able to happen.
Is there anything that we can do as far as like a petition, getting a petition together and get a, you know, if I can bring you a thousand names next month?
Stand up for me.
I'm sorry. You know, could we get a petition and bring you names on a piece of paper?
You could do that, I don't know how good it would be.
Right.
But I just want to let her know that we have looked at it and we support one company if the one we're serving.
I'd like to add something to that because I have been involved in it. That's one of the hot buttons that we hear on the street. I was down at Dollar General the other day and somebody brought that to my attention. I will tell you that I personally made three trips, not by myself, to have discussions with Piggly Wiggly at their headquarters in Pine Top, Kansas Carolina. And they own the franchise area for a right good, right good area from Jackson down to Tawler, I believe. And they requested us to get some documentation that it was feasible. So we hired a firm. We hired a firm to come in from our state. It was a particular firm we, they wanted us to use a firm that they had used in the past that they felt had integrity and had never been wrong when they built their stores or rented stores and went to different areas. So we had real in-depth conversations with them and they were very frank with us as what was going on in the grocery store business. It was a very tight market and you couldn't take any chances. But we hired this firm and they came here and spent about a week and gave us an in-depth booklet of the results of their survey and it was not favorable, but the majority of it was based on population. Income was okay, the median income was okay. And they gave us, I believe they gave us scenarios of where we would pull from outside of the county, where we would continue to lose patrons to the grocery store outside of the county. And I think they actually gave us some reasons for that too. One of the most staggering things about it, and if you're given just a little bit of room to be wrong in these statistics, in that survey, they showed us the food stamp dollars, where they were spent. In Gates County, I want to say it was like 14% of our food stamp dollars were cash in Gates County. In Hurford County, it was 90%.
Wow.
So if we had, so we tried to convince them that if we had this grocery store, it would be the reverse of that. So that was one thing that we had. They did not want, Piggly Wiggly did not want to have anything to do with the building. They said, you find somebody to build a building and we'll consider it. They also wanted to pay $4,400 in rent. That's all they wanted to pay. So we looked for a builder and a person told us what it would cost to build the building and they wanted about $11,000 a month in rent to build this huge store. So there were just a lot of pieces of that puzzle that would not, just would not fit.
I just think with the downfall of family foods now, it's bad.
It is. My family does not buy groceries in Gates County.
But if you had a store here, you would.
Yes, ma'am, we would. I appreciate the time for.
And I think conditions do change and I'm aware, I know the board is aware that conditions change and certainly we try to adjust to those changes in the future.
Thank you.
Right, as well as Parker.
I came down here today to speak and support this debate more to answer a lot of my questions. Mr. Chairman, thank you for your service and the rest of the house, also appreciate that. As a positive cash flow for the county, I say greed is good. More than we can get in business will leave the tax burden on the citizens, or all citizens, all of us. I'm greedy. I don't say just a food store. Food stores are anchor. Look at a strip mall. In my line of work, I have been to strip malls on hires and things many times. There's always not just a grocery store. There's gonna be a restaurant, maybe a beauty parlor, maybe a drugstore if the, if it's up there and contain it. Perhaps we could work on a package of tax incentives, land that they could have instead of purchase, anything that we can do to entice these people. They also operate on the principle that greed is good because their profit margin is one thing that they understand more than anything, their profit margin. The county needs positive tax flow. I urge you, is there any kind of incentives we can give these people? Let's face it, business is give and take. What's it gonna do for me? They're not looking for what they can do for you. Let's see what we can do for these folks and bring them here. I looked at a food line chopping center up in another jurisdiction and there was numerous little businesses that popped up around you. Grocery store for seed or other things. Grocery store for naked, so can other things. An auto parts store, a pizza parlor, anything that we can do. We're in a beautiful location between 13 to 17. Our dumpster part's a beautiful location for anything you want to put there. We have the capacity to make other jurisdictions very angry with us, moving in a judicious way. I know y'all have done your best, I appreciate you, I do. But maybe we can work on a little bit of give and take with them that will entice them. Some people might call that enticement, some people might call it bribery, call what they want. We get business, positive cash flow. City managers love, county managers love that. I love that. Greed is good. Let's be greedy and go after business viciously, any way that we can entice them to come here. Jobs, I don't think I look at with a grocery store, fresh vegetables, our farmers. Lord knows, farmers don't gamble, they claim. Tell me, oh, no, you don't, don't you go buy a chance on lottery ticket? That's gambling, that's bad. Don't you go put a dollar on a pony's nose? That's gambling, that's bad. Every time a fellow puts a seed in the ground, he's gambling. Biggest gamblers in the world, they don't know what's gonna happen. They got nuts. They know what it takes to go after what they want, they plant seeds, they farm, they work. They learn a great deal of lessons from farmers. But I will say this, I've taken up enough of your valuable time. Like I said, that grocery store is gonna be the anchor store. If the grocery store didn't make it, so can other businesses. Business is good for the county. Thank you for your time, I appreciate it. Thanks for your service, all of you.
Thank you. All right. Next on our agenda will be our delegations. Dr. Ealem, I'll go up to Long Community College.
To Chairman Jordan, Commissioners Felton, Hawthorne, Jernigan, and Holmes, including the county manager, good morning to all of you.
Right.
I am grateful to have the opportunity to stand before you today and basically just want to do four things. First, I want to thank you. Thank you for the commitment, continuous commitment that you give to Long Chuan Community College and on behalf of our district board of trustees and our faculty, staff, and students, we're grateful. We want to thank you all very much for the continuous support. Also, I want to, to just come and give you an annual report. Thank God it's important for us to be accountable for the resources that you do send to us and support us on a regular basis. So I have a copy of the manual report and I have a few extra ones for anybody who might not want to, would like to, you know, to take those and then this will be my point. Just want to highlight, I'm not gonna kind of go through and talk about all this, but you can read on your own. But it's been about 16 months since I've retired as the seventh president of Long Chuan Community College. And in that time, we've been focused, first of all, on trying to make sure that we hit our mission aligned with the community. And we have come up with a revised mission. Our focus is to serve the community and to become a world-class educational institution, focused on training and focused on teaching and learning. Anything else, we are gonna jettison. That's our commitment to the community. Resources are scarce. The first year I was at Long Chuan Community College, we cut the budget about half a million dollars. This current year we're in, we cut the budget another 300. As you can see, that's almost a million dollars out of our immediate budget. Our budget we get from the state is about six million, about six and a half million. Overall, our budget's about 12 million dollars with all of the funds. So we don't have a lot of wiggle room, a lot of labor room, we don't have a lot of resources to waste, so we have to be very focused and intentional and strategic in everything that we do. So we are focused on becoming a world class and we are also focused on student success. We have revised our values to make sure that they are in line with what our mission is and what our desire of our community we serve. And of course, you know, community colleges nationwide are focusing now more on the completion agenda instead of the necessarily the access. Access, we will maintain our commitment to making sure that it's reasonable for residents to attend and that we do everything we can to make sure that once they get there, they can complete their goals, aspirations. We have had a number of successes throughout the year. You'll see some of those from our staff standpoint, some from our student standpoint. Our college, our bellwether mentoring program was recognized at the national level, we presented in Orlando at the University of Florida Conference, a Delaware award we received. We were finalists, 10 out of about several hundred institutions in the country who applied for that and were nominated. We are proud of the success that we're having with our male mentoring program. And the bottom line is that those students who participate in that program, they stay, they get their degree or their certificate, and then they get jobs. And that's what it's all about, is doing what we can to help create this and stimulate the economic development in the area. I hear our residents here talking about economic development and bringing jobs to the community and increasing the standard of living. And that's what our commitment is to whatever it takes for us to do that. About midway, book rate nine and 10, you'll see some demographic information, talking about enrollment, as you can see, our Gates County, we have serving between 54 and 45 students who are coming to us for services. And so we are committed again to providing the best services for our students and that's in the curriculum side. On our continuing ed side, we're serving, as you can see, between 60, 71 students there. So actually it's, I'm gonna double that, about 130, 130 so students that we're serving. So we are really, really delighted that our students are seeing that what we have to offer is valuable enough for them to drive to our area and service, use our services. We will see on page 16, our commitment to completion agenda. We are increasing our graduates. You can see our graduates are also getting jobs. And so that's a testament to the training that they are receiving. We recently participated locally with our College of the Alamo Partners in a North Carolina line for workforce learning summit. And it was hosted at College of the Alamo, co-hosted with Long Chuan Community College. We had our state president there, we had our board chairs who were there. I had an opportunity to exchange information and talk about what we can do to help our service area again align and make sure that we are on target with the training needs and meeting those training needs, closing the skills gap in our area. And so we had an opportunity to share some of our best practices. One particular for us was with Nucor, how we are helping to grow their, make their plant safer. Ending up finally, we want to just share with you some student success stories you'll see on our pages 17 and 18, how we are giving back to the community every chance we get to teaching our students the importance of giving back to the community, both in community service as well as in financial resources. And so we want to instill that into them and it's used to be gaining some traction. We also have stories about our students who've come through, who've been successful, who've gone on and who are making good salaries, $40,000, $48,000, $45,000, $50,000 a year right out of, right out of school. And going forward, we're looking for opportunities to continue to partner with Alamo. Have a resident, Mr. President Beckton, when he was at Elizabeth City State University and we had a conflict in schedules, I was not able to attend the alliance meeting that we had for the new president, but sent word to her that we will be getting together to talk about opportunities that we may have with Elizabeth City State University to collaborate. So we're always looking for ways we can partner and share, resources shared in the vision that the community has to make sure that we do what we need to serve their needs. Within the parameters, as you all know, Gates County is outside of our immediate service area. And I always talk with Dr. Deven Meyer and whenever there's issues and whenever there's some opportunities as well. And so we try to keep those lines of communication open and keep relations going smoothly. But again, and finally, I just want to again reiterate our appreciation of the generosity of taxpayers and Gates County to continue to support Long Chuan Community College and hopefully there will be other opportunities that we can work together and also we can contribute to continue to support in the future. At this point, I just wanted to open it up for any questions that you might have related and that I might be able to address.
Well, I happen to know that your early college program is doing very well.
Yes, sir.
And Ryan Ruffin, I believe is the principal there.
Yes, sir.
Fine young man. And I hear good things about that as far as what's going on over there.
We are very proud of that program. It is growing. Our partners in North Hampton County are also attempting to expand that opportunity with them through our career and college programs program. They're not only, they're not only dedicated to serving those college transfer students and being able to enroll in credit, but also on the vocational side, we're committed to that. We've got HVAC programs going on where students, high school students leave with certain positions of HVAC, nursing assistant one, and also in welding. So no spring category, students can graduate with a high school diploma and also have a certification so that if they choose to go right to work, they can do that, but they can also come back for advanced training to get a better job and create a better life for the family. It really works. I had a woman, a mother, in my office in tears and I'm like, oh God, what is this now? I'm gonna have to deal with something. It was positive. She was crying because of the fact that her son had just graduated from our welding program and had received his certification and got a job. And it not only impacted him, it impacted his family, it impacted his church, and it impacted the community because all of those folks surrounded him and were proud of the fact that he was able to change his lives and the life and standing of his family. So there are a lot of stories like that and we are just proud to be a part of that and do whatever we can to expand and continue that commitment. I will say it looks like we're turning the corner as far as our enrollment is concerned this year. Before this year, we had been kind of holding our own, but I'm a firm believer that, you know, in business, you're either gaining ground or you're losing ground. You don't really stay the same. And so we're kind of losing ground, so we have turned the corner now and our enrollment this year is tracking upwards. Uh, we, we're reporting about a nine percent increase in our enrollment over last year. So, some of the things that we're doing, we feel like are, you know, we're on the right track. Uh, we, we need to continue that trend up, and, uh, programs, uh, expanding in our early college and in our College of Promise program, we really, um, encourage.
But I'll be, um, we...
Mr. Chairman, could I add something? I asked a question, Jack brought it up, because this was on my notes. That, uh, what did you call it?
Early college.
Early college. I didn't know they had that. And I had been to Fort Gates County, uh, School Board several times and getting a lot of empty promises. And when, what I was actually looking at was STEM school in the county. Camden County has a STEM school within Camden County, and all I got was empty promises. And then just probably within the month that I found out about this program that was, uh, apparently successful, uh, that you had. But my number one question, right now, we can't do anything, but number one question is, what can we do politically, I guess, to get Gates County part of Roanoke Chauvin area? We said, I mean, officially, right now, we're not. How do we become part of your, your school? We're sort of sitting here in Never Never Land between the two.
Well, I will say this, I know currently at Gates County High School that there are at least, I don't want to over, uh, inflate the number, but at least, uh, six or eight of our students who are going through, no, to COA and doing the welding program there. So, uh, in early college, there's, I know that many in welding, but there are some in other fields because they go early in the morning, they come back to the high school. So, a lot of students are taking advantage, but it's not at Roanoke Chauvin, they're going to COA.
Yeah, the early college part, I guess, uh, whatever, you know, as far as the welding's concerned, that's a trade school, you can do that, you don't even...
But I mean, I think they're going, they're taking a lot of courses online with COA at the high school that get college credit for. Because some of our students have, when they leave Gates County High School, have almost a year of college credit. And I believe, Jack, your daughter did that, didn't she?
I would encourage you that, um, to, to talk with, uh, with Dr. Deveney Meyer and find out, um, their commitment to, of the early college. Because of many of the colleges and processes, they have this, this program, and it works well if you give appropriate attention and listen to it. And I believe that she would, um, be, because the other que, the other answer to my question is a very complicated one.
I get it, I get it.
And it's a very political one, that I certainly don't want to, uh, open up a painful response.
Well, I guess one of the questions of all of you, and especially because you're here, how, what is our relationship between, uh, Roanoke Chauvin and, uh, COA?
I asked the question a few months ago.
Did you, did I answer that?
When I was visiting with, with Brian. And, and there is a line drawn, you know, like, there's districts and things like that. And the line is drawn between, it, with, pertaining to the early college is the only question I ask on the part. And Gates County is supposed to go that way.
Right, well, I mean, we're supposed to be in COA's territory. It's just that the other counties around us have got the campuses in the county and, uh, we kind of...
I don't know if it's anything political, but, but, you know, line always starts and stops somewhere. It just so happens.
Well, I know this, I've been here several times with somebody from, uh, Roanoke Chauvin would come over and do what he's doing today, but officially, we are with COA. Okay, that answered my question.
Yeah, but it is a great program. Uh, it saves you money and it saves you time because the student can graduate from high school with, actually with an associate's degree and start at the university as a junior. Uh, so, you know, even the math there, that's a great opportunity. And they get that first two years free, basically, free, doesn't cost them.
You're not over, immediately overwhelmed by college, that's one of the great benefits too.
That's right.
And when they go to college, they have some experience of what it's gonna be like, so that's very helpful.
But I'll be, we appreciate you coming and recognizing, uh, what Gates County is doing to support Roanoke Chauvin and, uh, we look forward to working with you all and serving our students in the future.
Thank you very much, thank you.
Thank you. All right, uh, our next item on the agenda will be our administrative reports. First will be our county manager report.
This report is from September the nineteenth through October the tenth. So, some of these items do have updates that will be discussed further in the agenda. The Old Courthouse project through October the tenth, the paint, painting is progressing. Trees were removed from the west side of the building. And at that date, final structural plans had not been received for Andreas and Company from the west wing, however, that is on discussion, on the agenda for discussion later today. The Gates assisted living project had permits issued and site work was taking place. Physician vacancies, Jennifer Baptiste has accepted the position of planner, and she did begin work on November the third, and I would like to take a moment at this time to introduce her.
Hey, what's up?
Good morning. Now, at that time, the position of deputy tax collector and a part-time building inspector closed on the tenth. Since then, and this is outlined, is not outlined in the personnel report, however, Lori Chavis has begun work on November the third as the deputy tax collector, and she is with us today as well. For meetings, on September the twenty-second, I met with Kathy Davidson, who is the new executive director of the Alamo Commission. The Alamo Commission will be taking a more proactive approach for economic development within the ten counties that they serve, and they are looking forward to working more closely with Gates County on projects. On September the twenty-fourth, the Soil and Water Conservation, uh, is yearly program review meeting, and I attended to learn more about the services that they provide and to offer support as needed from the county. On October the second, I attended the Chamber of Commerce Executive Committee meeting. October the sixth, Dr. Williams, who's the Gates County Public School Superintendent, invited me to attend a portion of the Gates County Board of Education Retreat Meeting to hear about funding possibilities for new schools and to discuss General Board of Education, or to participate in General Board of Education discussion on building of new schools. Emily Rogers, Melissa Lawrence, Sandy Sentman, and I met on October eighth to discuss reports required by all granters for the sewer extension project. And on October the tenth, I attended the Northeast Economic Developers Meeting at the Northeast Alliance's new offices and Williamson at the Dallas Center. Do you have any questions?
All right. Probably welcome aboard our employees, Ms. Baptiste, Davis. Any, uh, questions for county manager? All right, our next, uh, report will come from our financial department. We have your financial officer for you. Uh, any questions?
Chairman Jordan, may I ask a question? Um, how is it going with the, um, changing the, uh, cycle of the motor vehicles? Did that get smoother?
Wonderful.
Oh, that's wonderful to hear.
It really did. Um, we actually initiated our second webinar call, just to let them know at the very end. Um, and we were greatly impressed, being extremely well. It was a very good move, John.
So... I noticed in the financial reports, you have a budget amendment for the election department, budget division A five.
Yes.
That's just the information, uh, that doesn't appear to be...
And that was just for information. They had to, um, move money in order to pay for advertising for the election.
All right, uh... Personnel report.
How's your tax?
Oh, yeah, taxes, we don't want to put it in there. Okay, uh, tax department.
Good morning, you're not?
Good morning, good morning.
You have, um, like your report that was submitted there. Uh, and I will say in advance, uh, you'll, the line item for ZLS, ZKIS, um, that is, um, still ongoing. We are pursuing those selling fund accounts and still understanding. So, that figure, you know, is, is left blank for that reason. We, we wanted to research and make sure, we did not want to have some incorrect figures. We, uh, we did have a chance to, you know, follow up on, on some selling fund accounts. And so, that information can be, you know, supplied at a, a later time for that balance.
Showing fifty-two fifty-two now, but it...
Uh, yes, sir, that, that is the amount paid or so in terms of the funds, uh, received through ZKIS. That, that figure is, is, I'll say, ongoing research, we, you know, for, for that, for those selling fund accounts. There appears to be about, um, a little more than a half a dozen or so of ZKIS that have been active. And I will say, in the last two weeks, there, there've been some, um, land and property owners coming through to try to resolve it. Uh, we have eleven, twelve, and thirteen accounts that were unpaid, and I, I think the fact that the mere letter generated, the form letter from the attorney's office had spurred some, you know, some, uh, issue with those people coming in and getting those resolved, you know? So, that's been a good plus for us in the tax office. That oftentimes is proactive when, you know, a form and letter generated from the attorney's office. And that seems to spur some response, so we're, we're pleased about that and moving forward.
Is that to say that we've received some cor, some financial correspondence? It just hasn't been tabulated?
Uh, that is correct, and we want to understand that we're pulling those figures in, you know, appropriately before we, you know, that's why we also left, left blank. We want to make sure we understand, you know, from ZKIS that we're pulling those numbers, um, for those funds received. So, that can be, you know, provided in the supplemental report, um, when we get those, that spreadsheet together for you.
All right, I, um, I guess I kind of interrupted you before you finished. I'm sorry.
Oh, but so I can just, uh, any other kind of, um, discoveries that we were made? There's kind of reference in regard to motor vehicles and, um, in regard to that. Um, as DMV absorbs that role, we, we suspect, you know, naturally, uh, you know, that money will not appear on any, you know, as we move into a next year. DMV is now collecting all of the new taxes, that's gonna be, uh... And we look at the, the view of the spreadsheet, it may actually change because, you know, it'll be absorbed and collecting those monies on fourteen and taxes. So, there's perhaps, you know, some, some items that won't appear on the spreadsheet.
When they turn those funds over to us? I, I'm looking here, um, last year, we did fifty-two point nine, ninety-three percent at this time last year of collections, and this year, we have twenty-seven point sixty-eight for motor vehicle. Um, and, and kind of obviously, that explains that DMV has collected it now instead of the county. But when will they turn it over? How often they turn it over, monthly, quarterly, or biannually, or just how?
Yeah, I'm, I'm not sure how that will reflect, you know, what we see with, with that revenue. Uh, it would be on a quarterly basis, so when we see those funds, you know, post it. I mean, I can certainly check on that from a standpoint and, and, you know, get back with you.
Well, yeah, it, it doesn't sound like much, but, you know, if, when we have money for thirty days or sixty days, that could be additionally interesting to be going. Um, the state is benefiting from that. Would like to know how often this turn over.
Um, any other questions on the report itself? With, you know, moving ahead, we're excited to have, uh, you know, Ms. Chavis in place as a deputy tax collector and transitioning into that role. You know, as moving ahead, I just want to say the staff has worked really hard, Betty and Shelley and all of us, you know, uh, in that mode of, of moving forward, uh, as we approach the end of the year. Particularly as people are trying to settle up those fourteen bills, uh, you know, for us. That's certainly, uh, as we move into the holidays and, and moving towards, you know, listings that will be coming for personal property, business personal property, um, that'd be kind of helping out.
Uh, just a couple of things. The tax collection report is generally mailed, uh, emailed to the commissioners, uh, a or two before the meeting to give us a chance to kind of review it and formulate any questions that we might have. So, we would try to get that going again, uh, that would be helpful. Also, Travis Ellis, have you had any success on, on corresponding and emails? To see what we're gonna do with those accounts again.
Um, yes, sir, I did speak with, uh, in for email with, uh, Mr. Ellis as well. This is paralegal, Kim Stilly. There are apparently six unresolved accounts, uh, still with Ellis' law firm. Um, they are willing to proceed with the ongoing foreclosure process with each of those accounts, pending approval from the tax office as well as for missions. Not only reservation, it appears that it's been a year ago, um, or more since the correspondence was generated to close the initial twelve accounts with Mr. Ellis. So, I don't want to get a pattern, and where we're talking a year from now, you know, and having those unresolved accounts still out there. Um, they are willing to proceed, I just have reservations and, obviously, utilizing their law firm to do that. Um, you know, for me, in terms of getting the final tallies and just, um, you know, understanding what bills and what process, sometimes they just generated a basic form letter or pulled tax cards, so their initial work has been not modest, they're just initial, you know, for, for each of those accounts. So, um, I just don't want to get into a conversation a year now. We're still having those six accounts unresolved as we move into fifteen, you know? But they are willing to proceed. There are two only six, as I mentioned, accounts that they have, you know, with, with them, so...
And I think for the second board, um, I think they were left with Ellis because, um, they wanted to be paid for what they had already done. And the amount that they were requesting, uh, it was probably more feasible to, to let them finish rather than paying and give it to another attorney and have to pay the same amount.
I think that's right.
So, I...
Over twenty-five hundred dollars.
Yeah, some of them were close to four, if I remember correctly.
I'm gonna state this for the public as I can. Looking at your report, under the, the ten-year levy total there, in the second yellow column, does this read that from two thousand thirteen back to two thousand four, that thirteen thousand four hundred and sixty-six dollars and fifteen cents owed to the county? And that's all for those years, is that what I'm reading?
Um, yes, based on, yeah, breakdown, yes.
Four years ago, before we started running those ads in the paper again, we started getting aggressive. That was a huge number. So, now, it's only thirteen thousand four sixty-six. That's, that's great.
For selling fund accounts.
That's good.
All right, any other questions?
Well, getting back to, um, the attorney Ellis, I know, uh, I remember the conversation that we were going to leave him alone, but can we continue to remind him that we want action on those account, is that not a drag it out, continue to drag it out?
Uh, I will do all within my power to, I mean, you know, influence him to remind him we want some sort of a resolve. I mean, you know, it is only six accounts, and I'm hopeful with Kim's involvement, you know, his paralegal, she can be more active and, you know, to know that we don't want any more stagnant progress, if you will. Um, so, I, I certainly will, you know, if he's got them, if he's already done some initial work, which he has, and he's submitted bills, which we've not obviously, you know, tallied up for those yet based on completion. I mean, I can remind him through phone conversations, emails, that we want some active, you know, some resolve to those, yes. I think that's, that's doable.
Now, if I'm being, would that be something that you would be involved with, with just the tax department as far as back and forth with, um, the folks who was proceeding?
Really not sure about that. I can say your thoughts. How would you?
I mean, I just, I don't know where the letter should come from. I mean, if we respond in a letter, or even if we respond in a phone call, I don't know where it should come from.
Generally, the tax administrator handles all that. I mean, it's something that needs to back in a board. I think, you know, that would be something to maybe go over and discuss together and see if you need to step it up a notch.
Right, yes.
But I think, you know, the tax administrator handles, basically handles all of that.
Okay.
All right.
Yeah, just some refunds. One table from last time, you'll see that one gentleman who requested a refund, that two hundred and fifty-four dollars. When we're regarding to some issue that he had paid those taxes in Gates as well as in Virginia, with, I would attach those, that receipt from South County County from Mr. Moore, for that vehicle that was a Cadillac that he double paid, paid in Gates. And we see the vehicle tax notice with the reference that he paid in Gates as well as in Virginia.
Do I understand this correctly, that the Virginia tax was about nine hundred and forty-five dollars?
Yeah, that's on the Cadillac, yes.
And we're taxing about two hundred and something?
Yeah. You do, you see that correctly. That is quite, you know, a difference.
I say that it pays to live in North Carolina.
You see that correctly?
Nine hundred and forty-five dollars.
And that's county tax too. That's not city tax.
Okay. We probably want to do these separately. Which one was that? Refund for Kelly, Jean, and Adam less than more, two hundred and fifty-four dollars was played in the board.
So maybe we approve it?
I'll say that. Motion second, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
All those names. Okay, thank you.
The next one was also in regards to refund, also a vehicle, Craig and Molly Jean Kellaw issued. This particular vehicle was deemed out of the law by the insurance company. And I've attached that letter stating as such that was sent to Mr. Kellaw, which he provided to the tax office in the amount of a hundred and ten dollars, I think it was sent.
Any questions over there? Thank you for your cut, dry.
Can I have the motion to approve the refund?
Second. Motion second, we refund Kelaw, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
All those names. Okay.
The next issue, also a vehicle from Jennifer Anne Kraus. She kind of tags in there for she sold her Ford Escape to Comax Vendor in Virginia. Just for documentation, I've attached that purchase agreement for Miss Kraus in dollar readings and some other identification for that Ford Escape. Hundred dollars and eight cent was actually the amount of refund there.
Was that pro rata? I mean, at some point in time of the year, if they sell it mid year, wouldn't we get half of the taxes or something like that?
You would, yes, sir, based on when she initially got those tags and the length of months, if you will, yes. So that computation is a result of the pro rata. And she actually turned it in and turned it in and sold that vehicle.
All right, let's raise the board. Motion, motion to approve.
Second.
Motion second, we'll approve Kraus refund, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
All those names. Thank you.
The next one is in regard to a written one from Mr. Michael Elliott. This was when, in regard to real estate tax, that he paid, and you'll see the spring print on two occasions, and the tax office received two different payments from Ms. Ethel Jokowski in July as well as in September. And she paid four hundred dollars. And Mr. Elliott usually sends in the total payment, which he did on October seventeenth. So he is asking for a refund of four hundred. And this was an overpayment, actually, that happened. Not understanding, you know, the relationship and that. But it was a mailing payment from Mr. Jokowski there on two different payments for real estate.
For the future, he requested, do we normally, I think we have a procedure in place where we determine who's, who should get it. In other words, if two people paid it, I know it happens on mortgage companies many times. And a lot of times, we have given the money back to the mortgage company rather than to the individual. So if two people pay it, the process for determining, you know, which one should get it back. And I know a lot of times that requires looking into, you know, what has been agreed to or what's in the contract or whatever.
Estate property, or its siblings paying, or what have you.
That's what future. Probably want to know, you know, if that was considered in that refund. All right, let's raise the board.
Mr. Kim, I'd like for her to go back and research this a little bit, so we know if we actually pay it of the correct person and then bring it back to us.
I think, I think we've already paid somebody. That last line, am I correct?
Well, that was an overpayment refund that we did print in the monthly report. But it's not been approved.
We have a check.
Oh, yeah, no check. That's just a report line item that's generated every month. It's automatic when it enters the month.
Check that we need to.
Yeah, as an overpayment.
Yeah, I would expect, I would anticipate it would overpay it be there rather than the refund.
Right.
And the reason I say that is because the date, it has the last receipt of money was on ten seventeen, then two thirty-one is fourteen days later was when the...
That's right. That's when we did our month ending report. So that's, that's right, is when that kind of pulled that line item. So, yeah, it's a wording issue. Apologize for that. It should say overpayment for whatever reasons.
Did he bring it to our attention, do you remember, one of those paying people bringing it to our attention, or did the computer just?
No, the computer pulled this out as overpayment, if you will, when we did a monthly, you know, when we started that at one o'clock, and we run those reports closing out every batch, if you will. That was a line item that was generated.
Has he been notified of this?
He is not. We don't, like I said, in terms of this Ethel, she just suggested some sort of...
I know in the past, we contact them to see how they were going, see if they want to check back or whether to put it on their heads covering your taxes.
Right.
And I made the motion that we pull off on this and give you time for research and give them that option. But that's what our prior tax...
And also to determine who needs to get a check. All right, have a motion pulled.
Second.
My motion's second. If you take with this one, bring it back to us. I make the, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
All those names. All right.
One other than the issue with the contractor, but I'm sure that it might be, I'm not sure if that's due to be in a closed section in regards to the data conversion that is on tap with the tax office. And with Keystone and, you know, utilizing that contractor service, I'm not sure if that was something we wanted to review, or if that was a kind of ongoing debate in the closed section. So...
That's going to be the closed section issue because it is a legal contract that we got to sign on. And so once we, this meeting, we'll discuss in the closed section.
Yeah, and that server is anticipated hopefully from the vendor SHI to make those upgrades. Hopefully in the next few days, we'll have some equipment regarding that. So I think pretty talented.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, personnel report.
Who that's included is for the month of second.
Departmental reports. Do we have any question for our department yet? Keep it in leaks, fix.
I have, I have a question for Timmy on this award collection report.
Yes, sir.
It shows Gates County Water Department, and so it's those water bills, solid waste and all this. And then I hear where it comes down to your total, you have a very large figure, and these other numbers above it don't meet that figure. So do you have a starting figure that should be at the top of that? It's just something I...
You need to talk to finance, customer service on that. That's, this is the department reports as far as field work.
See, when I'm looking at, all these figures don't amount to that figure by any means. So I feel like it needs to have some kind of starting figure up higher somewhere.
It looks to me like this is monthly figure.
Right.
And that's the running annual. They just didn't, they didn't print your date monthly.
Top part of, and that's from Sandy's department?
Yes.
Okay.
I would ask the board department director to remind your meter readers that when you...
That's customer service.
Please remind your meter readers that when they pull the caps up on the meter box, please put them back down. Seeing some there, one side and halfway in and the other. Of course, grass cutting season is over now. It was frosty the other day, but it is somewhere in my head. So we want to make sure of the date.
A lot of the lids have been damaged, as you said, by plumbers running over them. We're getting into replacing them. I...
But when we pull the top, some of them, you know, you're supposed to split that lid.
The little inside door.
Right. But some of them, they pull the whole thing up, the lid itself. But then it's not reseated into the case. And, you know, right on, you see this sticking up. So just a...
One of the things that we've done on our side, the replacement lids that we just ordered, instead of the plastic tops with the plastic lids, they're plastic tops with the steel lid. So if one more goes over and sucks them up, it would be more than just calling a new meter box top. They need to replace some blades to go with it. Those meter boxes aren't designed to run over. And that's the reason I started setting all the new meters we put in. I actually raised them and set them about two inches above ground to prevent traffic from running over them and make them more visible. And also for future employees coming in, they won't have to search for a meter box that's recessed and around.
Okay. All right, our next item, respondents. We did have a report from the GMs.
Yes.
And also have a reminder from the Lions Club, the East County Lions Club, that December thirteenth will be our Christmas parade at three o'clock. Normally, the commissioners do participate in that. They work with the county calendar. Anything on county calendar that we need to be aware of, other than offices will be closed November twenty-eighth? And twenty-seventh?
It's not a county, but, I mean, it is a county thing, but on the Veterans Day on November eleventh, we are going to have a program in the courtroom honoring our veterans with a speaker and also with the freshmen.
This courtroom?
This courtroom, eleven o'clock on November eleventh.
Also...
Add spread word, please.
Also, our commissioner's meeting on seventeenth is not up there. It's seven. All right. Our next item will be to go in our public hearing for our FY two thousand sixteen Community Transportation Provo Grant application. And we have that for you.
This is our annual grant that covers the administrative costs and the capital costs for the GITS program. And this year it's the same as usual, with the exception in capital will ask me to replace one vehicle, to replace a minivan, to replace our telephone system, our computers, and schedule and software to be added, to replace the desk and some of the office chairs.
Okay, if there are no questions, we'll call for motion to go in a public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
Motion second, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
All those names. All right, we are in a public hearing. The case guard board believes that the question to approve an application to the, for the Community Transportation Provo Grant application, which basically provides funds to operate GITS, replacement of vehicles, and to fund that program. Updated public conference. All right, here and now, we'll call for me. A motion to exit public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
Motion second, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
All those names. We have one question. On page two forty-two through two forty-five, you have in all those pages attachments, quotes written in hand, and level agreement. Is that something forthcoming?
I didn't include the quotes or whatever. We have to have a fair market value that's being requested now for the amounts. But I got them off air and that just the amounts requested. It doesn't mean that we would use those services. They would be done after getting the money. But that's what we need to come up with.
Okay, what is it, like, any comments, discussions for the board? Okay, what is it, like, uh, any comments, discussions for the board? No, what is it, please, the board? Funding the grant.
Can remove that we, that motion that we funded the grant that presented to us?
All right.
Second motion.
Right, so motion second that we will, um, approve the Community Transportation Program Grant Application. We'll continue funding, all in favor of aye? All opposed, aye. Okay? That's not quite all of them.
And it was a wonderful reading.
This is the Paper Reduction Act, too.
All right, we've got another one.
Sorry.
Okay, the next, uh, public hearing will be, was the enhanced, two thousand sixteen Enhanced Mobility of Seniors and Individuals with Disabilities Program Grant Application. And we need to go to public hearing, uh, allow the public to comment on this grant. I understand that this is a new grant, first time we've received it, uh, we've not had it in the past.
Um, this plan, this goes for you and the next year I'm asking to, um, to add, to build upon it and to apply for next year's grant as well. But we just, we haven't started it yet, we started, well, we have started now, we started in November the February, the grant fund that we got for this, um, Enhanced Mobility of Seniors and Individuals.
So, so we approve this last year?
Yes, um, you approved a portion of it last year.
How much funds do we get?
We got, um, a hundred and five thousand, I think, and it's fifty, it's a fifty-fifty grant, um, we get fifty percent of it comes from the federal government and the other fifty percent is matched, we matched it with our road grants and with our current services that we provide to Medicaid and to A C D G and different, um, public paying clients. Um, the program, this new, it was the program that we, we talked about that was, it's an enhanced transportation service where we work with seniors, the seniors being sixty-five or older or a person with disability. It's not actually a part of our regular coordinated transportation services, but it allows for a person with an aid to go with them if they needed that or it's, some clients, because of the routes, have to go to a hospital at eight at ten thirty, leave at twelve, go back at two and leave at four. Some clients, they cannot meet that service because to get there at eight, you have to start like between five and six o'clock in the morning picking them up. Some seniors can't get ready that early, they have to wait till the aides come to get them ready and different things of that sort. It's contingent on time, we have so many people we can pick up and get to a hospital on time, so this grant allows seniors to have a service for them that, um, or persons with disabilities that there's more time spaces in them. It's more, it's not so much individualized, but it's close to being served, not like a gas service, but, um, they will have to wait for the route per se. We will be going to take them and we'll have technicians on the vehicles or, um, to help them get within, in and out of the vehicles, um, with and within, get out of the, um, offices or vehicles. In the past, we've had a lot of people from the, we don't understand it as a public transportation service, uh, medical transport, so we don't take people in and out of the facilities, we, um, drop them off at the door and because there's other people up there, we can't leave their vehicle site because the vehicles are home, so this particular service would allow somebody to be on the van with them, to go in the facility with them, to make sure that they, you know, get in there safely or to push them in or whatever. They wouldn't necessarily go in the doctor's visit with them, but they would wait for them and help them in and out of those services. It also helped them in and out of the home, right now, we have like a curb-to-curb transportation service, but this would go door to door, actually go through the door because we could go within the house to help them out.
The one that we're applying for?
Yes, and, and got part of the funds this year, so we'll start, we started it Monday.
But the hundred, like this one I'm trying to find out, is the hundred and five thousand doesn't allow, allow you to do, to go in the door right now?
Yes, that hundred and five thousand does, it started in November this time. Um, the, the difference in that grant and this grant is that we're actually, we're starting late, we're not starting until November for one year grant. Um, we would continue to do that and to build upon that and this service, what we're looking at doing is adding like, um, grocery store trips, um, pharmacy trips, um, we're gonna add like different places to, to the, um, service area, like currently we don't go to Franklin, but we have some requests to go to Franklin, this service would allow us to go there to see how we work that. So this is a build upon for the new grant that we started this year, we started this week.
Do you anticipate the matching fund, that the funds come from the same area as last year?
Yes, um, the, the matching part we've used is the road grant, which is L M, the Safety Transportation Assistance Program funds, um, Georgia and public funds and, um, and also there's some clients, it could be a client that's actually on Medicaid now that we can bill Medicaid a portion of it, but the portion for the, um, it, it, it will cost additional because we'll have a different, a second person up there with them, so that would help with that. And also, home, with the block here grant, right now we only get like, we get ten dollars per unit, no matter where we go, so this grant, that would help with the matching fund to get the total amount.
So the twenty-five thousand dollars county match will be made up through those grants instead of coming out of actual county funding?
Yes, come out of the payments that we actually already do have.
Trace, do you have, is there a grant to alter your services in any way when you get near the end of your budget year?
Um, what we try to do is to monitor you on the year because when you do sign off on the road grant, we sign off that we provide the services all year long. So yes, um, in times that the funds are lower, what we do is we may say, well, now we might take one person if it's outside of, to, to Norfolk or whatever, but there are some times when we have fund shortages that we'll say, unfortunately, we can't take that person unless we have multiple people to go, multiple funding sources to help that. So we, um, we didn't have that problem last year because we had the additional grants that we have, but in the past we have had that sometimes.
Gas prices should help this year.
Yes. Well, gas prices in the contracts, there is a, a clause in there that allows if it goes over its four dollars and one cent, that is an increase in the, in the cost.
All right, uh, we'll call for a motion to go into public hearing. So moved.
Second.
Right, motion second, all in favor of aye? All opposed, aye. All right, we are in public hearing now for comments regarding the Enhanced Mobility of Seniors and Individuals with Disabilities. Uh, this program grant, uh, will be approved by commissioners or submitted to commissioners for approval and your comments can be received.
When I had my stroke, I was going through power from the fire department, had doctors appointments and things like that, and GITS provided me with transportation, it made my life a lot easier than what it been if I didn't have, have it, this is a good thing. The, the people were polite, they were on time, they helped you out every way they possibly could and made sure you knew when to pick, they're gonna pick you up and didn't look for you. If you were at the hospital or wherever staying like physical therapy and things like that, you were staying a little bit away from the bus stop, the lady actually said, Parker, come over here, this is where you need to be, and I would do that and I very quite well and also they're very kind to me, they told me you were in good and full recovery, which is the same thing I heard from my doctor when I went to see him, so I went to see him. Anyway, it was convenient, it was courteous and there, this is the definite good thing and a need, so thank you for your time.
All right, all right, uh, the grant that you're receiving, is it sufficient enough to occur the entire year?
Yes, it actually, it actually enhances the, the funds that we get. Um, we currently don't get operational costs when we get administrative costs. These grants that we apply for allow us to, um, to, to pay for our operational costs. Generally, all our operational costs come out of fares that we generate and so the grant helps to make sure that we're able to sustain ourselves to, to complete our year in the black.
And with this program, how many new employees will you be bringing on?
We, um, probably won't have new employees, um, we'll utilize the employees that we have, they'll just transition ours.
All right, well, all right, any motion to come out of the public hearing?
So moved.
Second. Right, motion second, all in favor of aye? All in public hearing. All right, um, discussion for the board? Do I have to call for motion to approve the Enhanced Mobility of Seniors and Individuals with Disabilities Program Grant Application? So moved.
Second.
All right, motion second, all in favor of aye? All opposed, aye. Okay. All right, Mr. President. Yes, let's take about fifty, about five minutes break. All right, we'll call our meeting back to order, um, we're on the old business and first item is to reschedule our December commissioners meeting to Monday, December first and then we'll get it pulled back down on that week.
We had, I'll be out town on the first Wednesday, we had agreed to schedule it the following Wednesday, however, according to general statute, the meeting should be the first Monday in December of every, even number year and at that meeting we have to elect a chair and a vice chair. December first is the first Monday of December and I will be in town.
We rescheduled it for us to December.
Yes, at ten a.m.
Okay, uh, I'm afraid the board. Make a motion if you approve.
I think most of Bill and Matt already.
Oh, okay, I'm second, okay, I'm second.
All right, motion second, we change our December fourth meeting to December first, all in favor of aye? All opposed, aye. Okay.
Excuse me.
Okay, we, the next item is, uh, personnel board recommendation. Um, you have in your package, um, implementation and recommendation from the personnel board to change our captain and chief deputy, uh, in the sheriff's department from, um, non-exempt, from exempt to non-exempt. Uh, and what that does is it allows them to accumulate comp time, um, instead of, uh, just having to, uh, work those hours and not receive paid for it because they're not in, in any, um, in an exempt status. I think exempt status, uh, basically refers to management, um, where they have somewhat direct control of their time as well as, uh, they more confined to the office. So the personnel board has reviewed it and the recommendation personnel board is to change the captain and deputy, chief deputy, from non-exempt to exempt.
Yep, so it's the, the non-exempt employees, they're currently exempt employees.
Okay, all right.
Not exempt.
They're gonna be non-exempt.
They're gonna be non-exempt, yes.
So moved, we accept the personnel board's recommendation. All right.
Second.
Right, motion second that we will accept personnel board recommendation, um, to change the status of the chief deputy and captain.
Excuse me, will that, can we get the retroactive date?
The retroactive, the first of two thousand fourteen, for his personnel recommendation.
We'll modify that motion to, to, retroactive to March first. If, what happened is, that's when they were changed and the finance officer said that it would not be an issue to go back and, and correct from that date rather than starting from this day forward. Uh, Mr. Jerry, would you want to amend your motion to include that?
I think, I think Bill and Matt.
Yeah, I'll amend the motion to make it retroactive to March first, twenty fourteen.
Okay, the motion second, uh, retroactive to March first, twenty fourteen, all in favor of aye? All opposed, aye. Okay. All right, the second item, we have a personnel recommendation, um, in the finance department, uh, we have previously had a personnel coordinator, uh, those duties were performed by Celia Craddock who, uh, left in Florida with the county and had the reviewing position, the county manager and the finance officer come up with a payroll coordinator, uh, and some of the duties that were performed under the, uh, personnel coordinator are duties that are normally performed by the county manager, so they've taken those duties out and, um, take what you have for you as a, as a payroll coordinator, which more aligns with, um, with what's being done and also probably improved in behalf of the, uh, pool that the job will be announced for so that we can get someone on board. Kevin, if you want to add anything on that?
No, we did look at, I looked at county's, our size across the state, the majority have a payroll coordinator, county manager does service HR, we'd also looked at counties around us, some of those counties that are larger that are around us that have separate HR person other than the county manager, but because our finance department is so small and based upon other counties of our size across the state, this is a payroll coordinator would be the best titled position. Some of the duties that have been better defined from the personnel coordinator position and the grade would stay the same.
All right, motion back to the board, discussion.
Chairman, can we, we take the recommendation of personnel board on matter?
Second motion.
Right, motion second, uh, we will, um, change those, change the personnel coordinator to person payroll coordinator, all in favor of aye? All opposed, aye. Okay. Our next item is the update on the surplus of cement building.
The cement building did not sell on go of deals, we had two bids with the high bid of being five hundred dollars. Found out some interesting information just to make you aware, the gentleman did come and inspect the building and he is the one that provided me with the information, the building weighs sixty-five thousand pounds, so whoever, because of the solid concrete, so whoever does purchase this building would be responsible for moving the sixty-five thousand pound building. Um, the gentleman, that gentleman was told that he needed a ninety-ton crane to move it, which would cost about twenty-five hundred dollars and then special apartments are needed to move it because of the size. Uh, that was just something that I thought the boards should know for consideration as we decide how to dispose of this building.
Did he take his five hundred dollar bid?
He was, I, we did not know, I didn't know if he bid, to be honest, because when Bowery went to look, to look at the bids, she cannot get to the names of the people who bid. The reserve was a thousand dollars.
Couldn't take it anyway.
Unless you decided you had wanted to contact, you know, and negotiate directly with that person, however, it did not sell through go of deals, so we just need to decide what we need, how you would like to proceed with that building. It's the one that's down there in the corner.
How did Bill get it down there?
I was told a crane moved it, I had no idea who or how long it's been, it's been back there for a while and has been cleaned out.
May I ask one question? Wasn't it some offer from a telephone company, someone for two thousand dollars?
An animal shelter.
No, not for them, there was an offer from what I was told from a company that was for the thousand dollars, but then the commissioners decided that they would go on go of deals to save.
I think it was some meeting a while back and I don't know how many of you have looked at it, but if any of you have looked at it, if you take one look at it and see those big clevers in each corner, you know who somebody's offering two thousand dollars let them have it, because it takes a lot to move a building, those big clevers are not embedded in each corner for no reason.
I think, wasn't that same one that the animal, uh?
We offered it to the animal shelter and they decided they did not want it.
I think a thousand dollar reserve is, is too much because the most you get is five hundred, that's what we did on it, um, we probably need to lower our reserve, try it again.
No.
Well, I believe we received an email saying that there was, uh, they wanted, somebody wanted to know what timeframe also.
That was the gentleman who gave me the place without having to wait.
And it was given to us by, by, uh, Tom Longman.
I think what I remember was about three, four, five meetings back, or something like, night before now that came.
It was.
Or might have been wanting to give $2,000 for us, so.
Everything in it, we've been good, just taking it.
I remember y'all talking about putting it on, uh, this other thing, and when I walked out of the building that day and went down and looked at some of those clevers in the corner, you know, just talked about a lot of lunar booze out of there, and I knew dog pound they need to begin with. Because that's going to cost somebody so much.
It looks like only options.
Stolen jail.
Try to bring it back out there with more reserve.
Melissa, would you have anything, do you remember anything in the minutes that could take us back to that, to that $2,000 offer?
Uh, yes, sir. There was originally, um, a potential offer that Billy Wynn had had communications with, but that was prior, I mean, that was.
I think it was in July, because that's the first time it was being mentioned at my first meeting.
And Billy, we know how he moved it. We might need to talk to Bill.
I'm, I'm sending an email right now to see if there is a possibility that an offer could still be made.
Basically, anybody who has the ability or the desire to move it is our, is our buyer, regardless of what price it is.
Yeah, but, uh, so, we want to lower reserve. I mean, we're going to contact Billy and see if, if that potential buyer is still out there. But in the meantime, do we want to put it back on gov deals or do we want to wait till lightning or what?
Well, if we find out who this individual is, we can't sell it to them. We've got to just make them aware that some gov deals can, legally.
Legally.
Whoever, the person back in July.
Legally, we wouldn't be able to just offer it to them to sell. We've got to go through this process.
I don't think we need to negotiate with, just make them aware that it's back on gov deals. We'd love you to have it.
To the private dog reserve, or whatever.
And I would say leave it up to our county manager to talk with Billy and, and see, and maybe contact this person that was interested in it, and then, then put it back on gov deals and not fully figure in there, see, see what happens.
See what he puts in there.
You got to show them your hand. You know you're not going to get it unfolding.
It's time.
All right, we will bump up all that. This is bringing back its mighty. Okay, um, county managers, kind of look into that. Okay, we got surplus vehicles for gifts. We've got a 2008 Ford conversion van with a sub of $5,000 minimum. We've got a 2008 Ford Caroline standard van for $4,000 minimum.
That's your last two.
Yes, all right, those are two beginning to pledge to the board.
Make a motion that we put them on, uh, gov deals at, at the numbers of chiefs, chiefs put down.
Okay, motion. Second. Motion second, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
All opposed, aye? Okay. All right, the sheriff's department, they've got, um, 2007 Chevrolet Impala, 135,311 miles, a reserve of $1,000. Also, a 2003 Ford Crown Victoria, 110,000 miles, a reserve of $1,000. And a 2006 Ford Explorer, 165,000 plus miles, a reserve of $1,000. And a 2005 Ford Crown Victoria, 150,000 miles plus, a reserve of $1,000. And a 2004 Crown Victoria, 19,964 miles, a $1,000 reserve. 1999 Chevrolet pickup, 165,000, $1,000 reserve. Wanted to talk to the board on these things.
Sure. Is that, is that?
Yeah.
Where they go.
Well, these, if I could, these are, like you said, are old vehicles that we've had, um, and they just wore out. But there's, is an interest from the rescue squad on one of the Crown Vics and on the old Explorer. The head gaskets are blown on the head Explorer, and it's pouring water out there. The motor can, I was going to talk about the day we had put water in about every other day. And the Crown Vic was actually given to us by the courts, and, um, that's wore out, but they're interested in that. That, the engine in that, they said they could replace it, it would cost anywhere from $1,600 to $2,000. So, like I said, that's why we just put them out there. But these vehicles go back all the way back to 2002, 2003 back then.
So, you're not currently using any of these vehicles?
No, no.
Three of them are sitting down in the parking lot because they do not run.
The pickup truck, we actually got it back from the husky after we had it evaluated, and we get on and drive it 20 miles an hour. So, the husky did back over here, so, it's a shock.
My, my, my only question on some of this stuff, um, if you're putting a reserve of $1,000 and it's got a blowed engine in this type of, I think that's a little bit high. I think you forget the reserve and just let it go for whatever you can get out of it. And, and we've been real lucky on this gov deals. I mean, I, we've seen some stuff sell for $2,000 or $3,000 that I wouldn't get in.
The man that does the taxi cabs, there's already contact, and he's very interested. All we've got to do is put it there, they're, they're interested. The gentleman comes in, they repurpose those Crown Vics in front of the taxi cab.
So, do you think $1,000 is?
I, I, I think, I think the recommendation between $500 and $1,000, like you said, is get what we can get out of it.
My, my thing would be sort of take the reserve off of this stuff. You're, you're selling it as, you know, blowed motors, bad transmissions, this type of things, and that's expensive either. Especially if you have to put it in yourself unless you've got something. I mean, taxi cab guy, he might have one that's wrecked, but he can pull something out of, so.
Oh, is that all six of them or just the ones with the blow? Yeah, yeah, whatever.
I would say maybe hold a reserve on, on the Chevrolet Impala, because that is a drivable vehicle.
That is drivable vehicle.
Certainly, that is a reserve. Uh, on some of this other stuff that is not drivable, uh, so, take, take what you can get. Which, okay.
Don't be all the rest of.
Oh, really?
It doesn't impale them.
Okay.
All right.
Well, I'll say that about the one Crown Vic still runs.
All right, Impala going to leave at $1,000, rest up at $500.
Put a reserve in for $500?
Yeah, yeah, that'll be fine. I think you can get that even as a reserve.
I'll second that motion.
All right, who made it?
Yeah.
I'll, I'll make that a motion, sir.
All right, the motion is second. In fact, uh, we place a gov deal, uh, the six vehicles, the 2000 Chevrolet Impala, a reserve of $1,000, rest up at $500. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
All opposed, aye? Okay. All right, our next item, historic courthouse. All right, um, we have with us today, uh, Mr. Hassan and, and this, and this. We've done quite a bit of work on the courthouse. I believe that you all, uh, were the designers and architects of how to make those repairs and restorations. And, uh, we've come to a point where, um, our budget has somewhat reached its limit, and we have additional, uh, that you all feel needs to be done in order to move forward, and we as board need to make a decision whether or not we want to add those additional funds to incorporate this new option that you're going to need to take. If you always look at your options, you've got an option one, or option five, or option four. As the four items Hassan and Anderson addresses, um, I think we need to understand, um, a little bit about what, what we're doing. Uh, first of all, from my understanding, the steel tubes that are on the outside now, um, that were put there for support of that wall, we wanted to take those off of the exterior and put them on the interior, uh, basically for aesthetic reasons. Not necessarily for the proof structure, but this is basically an aesthetic.
Uh, let me, why don't I, why don't I just, um, explain a little bit of the history of what's going on? Uh, when we started on the project, uh, the walls were Boeing. The west wall, the, the west wall of the, uh, of that wing is not an issue because we, we knew all along that that required major repairs. It was the north wall and the south wall where the steel tubes were added. The wall started Boeing some years ago, and so, um, the, our original design was to get rid of those steel tubes by putting in the steel channels that you see now. And you can think of those as just like putting a, a belt around the structure, both at the first floor and the second floor, tightening it up so that the walls can't bow out any more than they, than they were originally going out, or than, than they've been going out. So, it stabilized the structure, so the structure is fine, just like it is with the steel channels there. The problem we ran into when, uh, James and his crew were doing the work, when they were cutting to put the steel channels in, they realized that not only were the walls Boeing, but the first lamination and, I mean, the first width of brick, and perhaps even in the second, was actually coming loose from the brick behind it, it had just broken away, and there were, there was a big gap in the wall from the outside in about four inches or so. There was, there was a gap like that, and what we realized then was, if we took the steel tubes off, the, the building itself would still be stable. It's not going to, nothing will happen to the building, but it's very possible that that outer four inches or so of brick would just fall off the building. So, we couldn't take the steel tubes off with, with, with that risk. And so, that's when we started coming up with a few different options of what we could do. So, the, of course, the most economical option, which is not the preferred from an aesthetic standpoint, is leave the steel tubes up and don't do anything else. And the option for, the cost for that is zero for the north and south walls if we leave the tube steels up, tube steel up. The next option, which is the one that originally was selected, was to take those tubes and put them on the inside of the wall, but then put, um, plates on the outside of the wall that are cut into the brick. And in essence, we're going to strap it together just like it was with the steel tubes, but you're not going to see it because there's going to be a relatively thin, I think it's a half-inch thick steel plate on the outside that would be cut into the brick. And so that when we take the steel tubes from the outside, put them on the inside, put the plates on the outside, it does the same thing that's being done right now. It just won't be seen. But it's the cost of that, I think, that, that we're struggling with is, is how much it costs to, to do that. And initially, we were hoping to just take the existing steel tubes off the outside, put them on the inside, and add the straps. And as we got into it, we realized we couldn't do that because the whole outside part of the wall would become, that outer thickness of brick would become unstable when we took the tubes off, so we would have to keep no more than two. We'd have to buy at least two new steel tubes, put two of the straps in, take those tubes out and move them, and so we could save some of them. But that's, um, that was the option, what we, that's option four, which I think is what you have in front of you. The, the first option was, the option four was to do, um, basically the work that I had just described to you.
That's for $2,810.
Well, that's, that's not all, because that's just, um, if you go to the next sheet, then there's, uh, sales tax and, and contracts of profit. Makes it $52,000. But the other thing that, as, you know, representing the design team, that we wanted to, we, we wanted to stress was that this, this cost in here has no contingency in it, and we believe that in addition to this cost, there should be a 10% contingency in it, because with old buildings, you always run into stuff that, just like we've run into at this time, that we didn't foresee because we didn't know the brick was falling away on the north and south walls until we started doing repairs on them. So, we think there should be 10% added on to this, and also there's additional cost for the dumpsters that is not included in this cost. Then there was the option five, which we don't know that we, that we need, but was originally, originally discussed with the contractor. That is, even after we do all this work, if we think it's still not as stable as we want on the outside, there is a product made where you drill small holes into the brick, probably 12 or 16 inches, and you insert these hemical anchors that are grounded into place and tie those, tie the bricks together. If we needed to do that after we've done everything else, so that adds another $8,000. Eight, $8,700 to it, so it's, it's, um, obviously very expensive to do this work in. And, uh, that's why we came down to the meeting, so that whatever questions you had, we could respond to, and then you could make your decision which way to move forward.
I, I think at, at the last meeting, we added $25,000 to the budget. We had $22,000 remaining in the existing budget, and we added $22,000, which gave us $47,000. And with, with what we have before.
Okay, uh, I calculated this late yesterday, and I apologize if I did not send it to everyone. Um, calculating option one, both of the options that were presented to us without the contingency is $61,626.78. You add in 10% contingency, it's $67,789.46. So, if you, after the last meeting where we agreed to do $25,000 for the fund balance, that had, that left a balance of $46,581.20 in the courthouse project budget. And with both of these options and the contingency added in, that is $22,789.46 more than what we have in our budget.
Just send it in 20.
And as he pointed out, that does not include the dumpster tippy fees and for option five. There was a note in there that says that does not include food and lodging if that additional work takes additional days in the project.
That sounds right.
So, we could be talking about an additional $30,000. That would be, maybe if we went to option.
If we needed to use option five.
Option, option four also includes the west wall in that $40,000, which is taking all that brick off there and then relaying all that, tying it all back together as well. It's not just the north and south.
When you say relaying the brick, you're talking about the new brick?
Mm-hmm.
So.
But not, not all the way, not the whole thickness of the wall, just the outer course of the wall that white. And then there's a hollow spot there in the center where the chimney is, and then that'll be filled, uh, to create like a column down to the footing to help support that wall before that buttress can be removed.
And the reason I ask the question is, the, we could anticipate. And the reason I ask the question is, the, we could anticipate the theme of the dumpster weight...
That's right.
...to be heavy, because of the percentage of breaking at this time.
Can I ask one question? When you're talking about redoing the west wall, is pot-bellied now, when you redo it, will it be straight or still pot-bellied?
The end wall will be straight, won't it?
Certainly.
We, I think it'll be straight, because I think it's mostly the, what we found is the brick coming away as opposed to the whole thing going out.
But we don't know until we take that outer course off to see what those inner courses are actually doing. We can see that center part where the chimney is, but I can't see beyond that.
See, why I ask that question, when you're spending all this money and you have to justify to the public when you do something, and then you see a nice product in the end, folks don't say something, but you're spending all this money and then somebody right behind that thing is still pot-bellied, you know?
Well, it certainly won't be pot-bellied like it is now, because we'll, we'll, we'll be able to regain whatever gap there is in the brick, in the gaps in the brick right now. In the northwest corner, there's a crack, I'm sure you've seen it, that's about that wide, and we're going to be, we're going to be closing all that, that up, so that will get rid of that. Coming back down, I mean, I, I would think that, that coming, as you take that out and go back up, you can also have the base center do things that will help keep that straight, but you still have to come together in the corner, so you're, you're stuck with, you're stuck with certain geometric constraints of the building that you can't change because they're there, and there's nothing you can, nothing you can do about it. But the, the bow in the north and south walls is still going to be there. We're not, we haven't, there's nothing we could do to get rid of those bows either.
So I mean, the building was built, it was a double brick, had double brick walls in it, and the bricks weren't tied together?
Oh, no, it has. How thick is the wall? It's at least...
I think it's five to six courses of brick.
It is a lot of, it's a lot of brick, and that's why, from a, from an overall standpoint of safety, it's plenty safe the way it is right now. And it will be, and it would be plenty safe unless somebody happened to be unfortunate enough to walk by it if we took those tubes out and, and the brick fell off. And that, I've seen that happen in many places in Raleigh, where I'm from, where old brick, if it's not anchored in right, it'll just fall off. The building doesn't fall down, but you've got a safety hazard if the brick falls and has to hit somebody. And that's, the whole thing we're doing now is to try to make it safe for that outer white, it's spelled L-Y-T-H-E, the white of brick, it's three and five eighths, and we think there's five or six of them, and so it's a thick, thick wall that's very strong. It's just that outer part, for whatever reason, is just separated from the inner part, and it has to be held together. And so that's why we're going through all this, to then try to get rid of the steel tubes as well, so that you don't see them.
If we leave the steel tubes in place like they are, finish the west wall, I would bet hitting within the approved budget.
We don't have that, that, I don't have that option in here except from earlier, the west wall option was twenty-five to thirty thousand dollars.
I have a breakdown of that...
Okay.
...that revision. Did you guys like the copy of it to look at? I have an additional copy.
Yes, sir.
What that is, is everything itemized that is in the option four and five. It's the same numbers, but just four and five is locked together.
So what was the, what was the amount for just the west wall?
The west wall is twenty-one thousand four fifty-one, and then you'd have to add the lodging, scaffolding, the toilet out there, you'd have to add that to that. This has the contingency that's in the line item, it's not pulled out like in three and four and five, so it's a little, a lot more detail there.
Because we had originally allocated up forty-five thousand dollars based on the two options that we had selected.
So we're looking at, just in the, what, the additional twenty-one thousand or something?
Almost twenty-three thousand.
Almost twenty-three. Above what we've already given.
Because in current, what we have left, we have enough to do the west wall.
Correct.
It's the north and south that we've...
Because of the new...
Mm-hmm.
Right.
Ms. Harper?
Yes, sir.
The, you, you told us about a commitment from the historical society.
Yes, sir.
And you remember that Dollar Mount day?
The east wing that we are remodeling is seventeen thousand, eighteen thousand, wasn't it?
I have.
It was in that neighborhood that we have said that we would do the renovations on that form.
And while he's looking for that, the floor will need to be reinstalled and insulation and... He wants this outside work that's completed as well. So we will need to budget some money for that as well.
Because that has to be done now. Or can that be done in a, in a, in another budget, or the county budget?
And then that would be in the lot, and there's, remember, it's a dirt floor that's open to that building. And that's why I bring up, if there's a subfloor in there, but this was taken down all the way to the bare dirt.
And, and I, I believe that if you talk to Lee Thomas, you might not have to go back to what was original.
I've talked to him yesterday, actually, about five o'clock, he called me. He said that it does not have to be toned and grooved, but by, he said, of course, that would be the best. He said, however, if that's not in the budget at this time, you can't put in, you know, a particle wood floor.
No, no, no.
Well, that's the way, he even said, that's not, that's not plywood, I'm sorry, not particle wood, that's like plywood. He said floor, and then, you know, go from there. And he said, he recommended, of course, some kind of drywall with a moisture resistant barrier in between it, that sort of thing. I know that because of the size of the room, so I did ask Ed Gert just so we could have some kind of ballpark figure. He said, of course, it would spend on the flooring and everything. He said he felt like thirty thousand dollars would probably take care of everything in that room at this time.
Well, I think, well, I cannot speak on behalf of the historical society.
The flooring, I have that and I'd save it.
Oh, you did?
And I plan on reinstalling that.
Okay.
But it was colored with plywood. It was plywood, toned and grooved, and then the floor joists, so...
Okay.
We plan on putting it back like we found it.
Okay.
So that, that cost is already...
Is that, that's included in...
That's included in the, the original kind of budget.
Oh, okay.
Very good.
And what about the walls?
Man?
What about the walls?
They weren't a...
Okay.
The interior walls is like it is.
Okay.
Reason I asked Ms. Harper for that information, you know, this is our, this is our historical manual, and, you know, it's on our, it's on seal, comment that was made about the bow and the wall, you know, people will support what we're trying to do if we have a good finished product. Historical society has been generous to take on the other wing and, and some, some costs there, and I think we need to do it right. We'll, I think we'll regret if we don't do it right. I'm, I'm really not excited about riding by there and seeing those tubes on the front of that building again.
Oh, I'm not either.
It's my con, my comment. If we've got, you know, down the road, we're probably going to ask for the community, for fundraisers and things, you know, down the road, I don't know, that's, I'm not on that committee, but if we're going to, we need to take those things into consideration too. We, if we're going to ask the public down the road, 10 years from now, five years from now, to come support in some manner, we need to do our part right in the beginning, so that we'll have something afoot to stand on, and have some integrity in the project. So to the board, that's how I feel about those columns on the outside, if that helps anybody want to know how, where we're saying this was.
I kind of, you know, I deal with that as well, and we're talking about positive additional twenty-five, thirty thousand dollars, in addition to the twenty-five, and we've put in there to cover the whole thing. You know, we've spent close to three hundred and fifty thousand dollars in this project already, and to not finish it up for this amount, to make it look the way it should be, I think so deserves to, to, to be a contender for the project, is, is doing for the county, so I couldn't argue that. All right, any other comments on where we are?
I don't know, I would just say I cannot speak for the historical society. One of the rooms, upper room, is that your room, I think that they would be, look upon it favorably to help with, we already have the cabinets to go into the windows and stained glass and all that sort of thing, so I think they could definitely sign on that room too, but I can't make that unofficial. But we do have that, we're already done.
All right, we're going to need an authorization from the board to move forward with allocating funds to proceed with option four.
Four. And possibly five.
And possibly five. I think we do need, we do need to set a limit, possibly thirty thousand, if, if we go forward, maybe come back to the board, I would think, rather than...
I have.
Like an authorization.
With the contingency value, it's thirty, right?
Yes, but I'm pretty sure that that would cover that and the dumpster and regula, regula, and we need to do other stuff.
James, do you feel good about the 10% contingency?
Yes, and, and I don't anticipate having to use it. I think it's just a good idea to have it there just in case we run into something. We, we won't build it unless we need it, and we're going through them to sign off on it, to verify that it was actually needed and was changed from the original scope.
Yeah.
But 10% contingency, that comes at sixty-four hundred, is that correct, the number you have?
I was thinking it was a hundred thirty, like twenty-eight, twenty-nine.
Yes, so that's why I said, you know, just a third.
We would ask, you know, we're operating on a budget, we're, we're asking our contractors to protect, you know, to be as frugal as possible. We're all trying to make this successful, but within a budget that doesn't cause undue hardship to the county as well. All right, we would need a motion to authorize the funding of option four, an amount of thirty thousand dollars.
No, thirty thousand to include option four, five, and the contingency.
Possibly five.
Right.
Possibly five. Mr. Chairman, I believe that we allocate additional thirty thousand dollars to the historical courthouse project for what's been presented to us for option four and possibly option five with the contingency cost included.
Mr. Chairman, I'll start with that motion.
I have a motion second. Further discussion? All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
All opposed?
Thank you.
When can y'all start?
Well, now that the crew will order the material, so it'll be a few weeks before that arrives, and then we'll come up and start working.
And that has a weather guess?
And, and that's part of what contingencies would be for, in case we get delayed with weather, we're obviously going into cold time of year, so...
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. It's the Gates House Park Discussion. We lost, or the nineteenth, we have a special call meeting to discuss the parking request for a variance by Gates House, and at that time, they had presented a variance to the county requesting that we reduce parking to forty-two spaces, and we could not process the variance because it had exceeded thirty days from the time that the special use permit was issued. And also, it had gone to Superior Court, even at those time frames, because the board adjustments could not review a decision that they had made and approved. We had quite a bit of discussion on that, and it seems like that there were differences of opinion among the commissioners who were here on how many parking spaces we should have. And therefore, we did not authorize sending a request to the planning board for their comments and, and review, which is required that we do that prior to making an amendment to zoning orders to establish parking spaces for assisted living. I ask that we bring it back. I would ask that, we as a board, we can have a discussion on this, is that if we would send this to the planning board, requesting their review and comments, without specifying to them how many parking spaces we want them to have. In other words, give them the facts, give them the facts, the company has requested forty-two spaces, give them the data on how many spaces assisted living facilities have in surrounding counties, and then have them review it and comment, come back to us, and then we, as a board, once we get that back, we can decide on whether or not we want to go with, with their limited number or if we want to sign a number. That way, I think it would take away from all of the differences of opinion that we have now, which really we can't do anything until the planning board do their review legally. I, 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 I open up this now for discussions, and originally, we had required them to have a hundred and one parking spaces, and we recognized that that number was not based on actual requirements from our zoning orders, and the requirements that were used were, were not correct, because the residential support center is for non-profit organization intended to be used solely, solely for temporary occupancy by patients getting treated at a local hospital, and family members of patients getting treated at a local hospital, so that didn't even apply. So the board will, let's take a look at this. We do need to, to get something in place for Gates House, so that they'll know how to plan and how to receive with, with the construction and preparation of parking spaces at the Gates House.
Mr. Chairman, as a citizen, and that's one of the things I wanted to address today, I let you go on, but one of that, the meeting that you've already had, in which the board voted on eighty-four, have y'all voted to make that known and voided? What is that meeting, how is that going to affect, because you already had one vote, which is official meeting, and it's a CD made of that, so how are you going to do away with that vote?
Well, Mr. Brown, chief, first of all, that vote did not pass, and you can...
There were three people present.
And the vote was two.
And the vote was two to one.
I said it didn't pass.
It did pass.
It did pass.
I voted against it.
Yeah, but that don't mean that you can dictate it here.
You have one vote, and you voted against it, you did. It doesn't have to be unanimous vote. Two to one is the majority.
Text amendments have to have a unanimous vote on the first reading. And this was, this was just a motion specifically for Gates House, is, is what Miss Hockler, Commissioner Hockler sent her statement. But a letter has not been sent because after the meeting was over, I did not, I was not told to go ahead and mail the letter to either Chuck White or Mr. Keller, who the letter needed to be actually addressed to.
It goes to the planning board, but I guess that's where I'm a little, excited to take into consideration that we had three board members, two voted for it and one voted against it, and so the motion passed based on the, on the two, that was, on the two votes that were. Okay, um, I apologize, I, I did not look at, I did not see that as, as passed, I was looking at it as, that you would need the, the old approval. If it happens in that, then I guess what we need to do is to, the letter goes to the planning board, as far as.
Not that, whether it wasn't, was it, the motion, I don't know if Melissa has had a chance to type it, but they're in it, but I know the motion, I don't have those notes that I made, but the motion was for Gates House, and it said specifically Gates House had eighty-four parking spaces.
You, you can't do that, because first of all, it has to go to the planning board for review and comments, they have to have a thirty-day review, we can't, we can't motion to amend the zoning ordinance without the planning board having their opportunity to provide review and comments, and that was the purpose of the discussion, not, the, the eighty, the eighty-four would have been what we would recommend after their approval, I mean after their review and comments, we cannot, uh, we cannot designate, um, an amendment to the ordinance without that. So, so the ordinance doesn't change, the only thing this is doing is telling the planning board what, what we plan to do. And not, uh, and not, that's, that's not what, what the, what the change would be right now, you've got to go through the planning board.
The planning board meets November eighteenth, at three o'clock.
Okay.
I'd like to request an opinion, I want to request an opinion from my county attorney on this, because I do not.
Mr. Brown, please, um, now, what do you want to, what do you want to state now?
I wanted to say that, I wanted to say an opinion from my county attorney, because it was the understanding of the commissioners that that was a final vote, and, and it seems like that we can't get any direct answers here, I don't think anybody, any of you knows the answer.
Well, I can tell you now, the reason we had the meeting was to approve presenting this to the planning board, so they could review, bring it back to the commissions, and then we could act on it. We could not, the, the vote could not come in to change, to amend the zoning order, it would, the vote was to, um, propose eighty-four parking spaces, um, in which the zoning ordinance would be amended once the planning board had their review. So we, we can't, we couldn't, I can tell you now, we cannot do it until the planning board takes a, takes a look at it, the county manager, I believe, you should, you have verified that.
Right, but the motion was not for a text amendment?
No, it, it, it can't be for a text amendment, because it has to go to the planning board. The only thing we want to do is get it, we want to get it to the planning board, and do their review. Once they do their review and come back, then we can act on it. If we want it to be eighty-four, we can make it eighty-four, we want it to be sixty, or we want it to be forty-two, depends on whether we put the, the majority of the board at that time says. That vote did not dictate that it will be eighty-four and amended. All right, so, um, I guess what, since we passed the vote, since it was passed, the letter to the planning board would be, uh, you don't have a copy of that, do you?
No, I did not bring my file down.
Okay, the letter would read, something to the effect, that considering Reverend A does not have parking space requirements applicable to assisted living facilities, the Gates County Board of Commissioners request a review by the planning board to provide comments on the proposal to amend the zoning ordinance by adding eighty-four parking spaces for assisted living facilities. That's what it is.
I thought it's not the way I understood the motion to read for the vote that was taken. I mean, the motion that I understood was that, the motion was specifically for Gates House. Now, it is a public meeting for the planning board, they can be, they can be, the information to be presented, and they can be asked if they would be consider, consider a text, create a text amendment that would then be brought to the commission for the thirty-day public hearing, which I believe is essentially what you're at, and really want the planning board to do is to create a text amendment.
Correct.
Or to help develop one, if God has a house to develop one.
Provide review and comments on what parking spaces should be required for assisted living. And that has, it has to go through them. See, the letter said, and, and this is exactly from the letter, the letter said, "This letter is written to request your review and comments on a proposed amendment to Reverend A."
But there was never a motion to send that letter to the planning board at the last meeting that passed.
Well, Mr. Jordan made the motion, but he couldn't get a second, that died.
Right. That's where that was. Now, the eighty-four had a two to one, he had a two to board and one against.
That's majority, yes.
Hey, John, go ahead, you go ahead.
I'll just tell you, two of you that are not here, I also asked a question, who was making this request for his building amendment, and I could not get an answer, no one.
The commissioners, well, we would be making that request.
Or who, who requested it of us?
Chuck White sent me the initial, he, he's the one who called me initially for that request, after all the permits and everything had been issued.
After the fact. I have something in here that, uh, concerns me concerning this, and it's a letter to the Gates County Board of Adjustments from Commissioners Henry Jordan and Jack Owen. Subject error and the number of parking spaces required, and it lists a whole lot of things that y'all want to go through it on all, and then it's signed off by Henry Jordan, Commissioner Chairman, Jack Owen, Commissioner Vice Chairman, and it appears to be a letter from the Board of Commissioners.
Now, what does it say, what does it say at the first stop? It says a letter of support for variance.
Well, it, it appears to be a letter from the commissioner, it says from Commissioner Henry Jordan, Jack Owen, and it's signed off by the chairman and vice chairman of the board. It was, in appearance, it would be a, a, an hour from the board now, now, the other week.
Letters of support.
Where does it say support?
At the top.
It said the Gates County Board of Adjustments, Commissioner Senator Jordan, Jack Owen, error in the number of parking spaces required, doesn't say anything about support. I mean, in the heading?
It was a, it was a letter.
I agree, it's a lot.
Wait, I'll stop there. Yeah, I, you know, Natalie would tell you that when I went in her office, I told her that, that I was simply there trying to find a, a solution to the dilemma of the parking spaces. And, and I had been provided with seven or eight, uh, different facilities, some having about the equal number of beds and some having excess number of beds, and the parking, parking numbers now leave within the forties, forty-eight, I mean, it was so, I mean, it was, it was doubled plus at a hundred and one, and so it just glared at me and said, you know, why, why would we, if we want to be friendly to economic development, why would we burden these people to do that? Well, then we see, then we see in our documents, in our document that, you know, that mathematically it would be required, then, you know, we need to do something about that.
Hold on, just a second, you said the support is not in there, it says in, this letter is written to support.
But you said it was in the heading, I believe.
I said, I said the first sentence. It says in accordance to section thirteen oh four and five, where I'm saying, "This letter is written to support the Gates House assisted living facility request for parking variance." Support is there?
I was looking at the talking.
Well, I'm not, I'm not even speaking of the content of the letter, I'm just speaking of what it looks like, it appeared to be written from the Board of Commissioners.
Well, Billy, appearances are deceiving.
Obviously.
That's why you had two commissioners to sign it, because it is a letter of support, it's not, it's not, it's not public commission.
I, I signed my name to it, because I wanted them to know how I felt.
Well, I.
About the, you know.
If you had been here on that place Wednesday, um, my concern was, yes, I'm, you know, supportive of assisted living, but I also want to be supportive of the clientele and their families and the people who go to the facility that have a place to park. And I've had firsthand experience with nursing homes, and parking is an issue. When you have elderly people, visiting elderly people, they need to be on it, be able to get into the building in a safe manner, not be parking on the grass as someone mentioned, or parking down the road, which is dangerous on that stony lane. I was, and I was looking for a compromise, I felt two forty-two was not nearly enough. You have, suppose you have fifty employees, yes, there's someone that'll be on shift work, but fifty employees, shifts come out, shifts go out, there, you know, there's a lot of space that's going to be taken up, a forty-two with fifty employees, where is the families going to park, to park? And, you know, a lot of people, you know, if someone is going to visit some, a person, they would like a place to park, sometimes people have more than one visitor, and that means more than one park there as well. You know, I just felt forty-two was very unreasonable.
Well, and, and we address that in the manner that, um, you know, you're gonna, you look at any business entity, many times you're gonna have situations where you don't have enough parking, um, it's, it's.
And if you don't have enough parking, what do people do, they drive all by them?
Well, and, and, and that's true, but, you know, what you have is, you have a, a professional opinion, and I've said this before, you have, from engineering science, they say that this is normal for this type of facility. Now, if we want more, as, as I said to you in the meeting, I said I was willing to compromise with seventy. That's, that's one per bedroom, but, but, but we're gonna, we wanted eighty-four, that's more, the, the example you gave where your mother was staying, I believe you said they have a hundred and forty-six bedrooms, a hundred and forty beds, and they have. One forty-six, and I believe you said they have a hundred and fifty-two parking spaces.
Hundred forty-six beds, hundred fifty-six.
This was discussed for two hours last week, a motion was made, it passed, as I understand it's thirty days before it can be brought up again.
Billy, what I'm telling you is, is that we cannot, legally, you cannot make a motion to amend a zoning ordinance.
No motion to amend anything.
But we asked for a footprint of the design of the building, they already had eighty-some parking spaces marked out on the blueprint that they had sent us for the approval of our building inspector. So, they are, they're moving dirt right now, they have to have some type of footprint to go by, what are they going by? They're not, they're just moving dirt and move dirt, they're trying to, um, you know, they're putting in pipes, they're putting in, I would think, putting in the roadways and parking lots, you know.
Well, but it also would point out that these spaces are supposed to be ten by twenty, and on that drawing, I believe some of them was ten by eighteen or nine or something, and so, you know.
And also, that, that professionally you're speaking of made, made those same decisions.
What we need to do today, board, is we need to authorize this to go to the planning board, that is, that is the only purpose of the meeting, and the request was to authorize sending to the planning board, um, our request, or their review and comments, so that we can get it back, have a public hearing, and go through the proper channels to make an amendment to the zoning ones. Now, you know, why would we make it so difficult? I mean, it's, it's, it's not, it's not reasonable. That's all we need to do is get it to the planning board, we don't have to tell them, I mean, if the motion has been made for eighty-four, um, if, if we consider that as the, the majority, then the letter can be adjusted to show eighty-four and see what their comments are. They may come back and say, well, we don't think it needs to be eighty-four, it needs to be sixty-four.
Or we could do nothing and have it as one or two.
Commissioner Hockler?
I mean, I mean.
I would say this, the, the Board of Commissioners had to work hard for the last six years to bring this business to the county. You're not gonna get businesses to the county without the efforts that, that was put forth to try to bring a business like it this year. And we're looking at this, appears to be looking at this as it, uh, you know, hey, you survive any way you want, we have a citizens' stamp tomorrow, so we need to have tact, we need to have the incentive to bring business here. We're not being business friendly when we take this attitude that, uh, you know, a hundred and one parking spaces, even though you know that's not the, the right number, we've got to try to help support these businesses and help them to, to, to survive and, and, and do those things that, that need to be done, and not those extras that are wannabes or, or are just gonna be convenient for us.
And I believe, if you recall, I was trying to reach a compromise between the two extremes when I made this suggestion, I was trying to find some middle ground, but I also think that we have an obligation to the citizens of the county to make this facility that is, so that they can have access to the building in a, with, a parking spaces that they can use. Forty-two, there would be hardly any parking spaces for people who go to visit them.
We're not going, we don't need to go through that, all we need to do is to go get it to the planning board, if it's eighty-four, fine, if, if we say today that, that the board say eighty-four, send that to the planning board for their review and comments, if they come back and say sixty-four, we still have to vote on it again, we've got to have a public hearing, once we have a public hearing, then we'll decide what the parking space number will be. This is a formality, this is a process that we need to get in place, to sit here and debate it is, is useless. All we need to do is get it to the planning board.
I'm sorry, I missed you. Your recommendation, do you remember what your motion was?
It's all tape. No, I don't, I did not write it down, no, I did not.
It was, Jack, it was something very similar, not word for word, to allow the gates sites to continue with the process that they were using right now, their site plan showed eighty-four sites on eighty-four parking spaces, and the motion was to allow them to continue as they were doing. And the motion was to allow them to continue as they were doing.
Have they been notified of that?
However, the letter I sent when I returned their check, because they had already paid the money for the variance request, which could not be heard by the board of adjustment, it said that we would want them to, you know, it could not be processed because it could not, because the 30 days had passed, to appeal the decision and once the decision was made, they would be notified. Does not tell them that they can proceed with less parking spaces.
When we were in Natalie's office talking about this letter, Natalie, you came up with a number of, we did the math and it was like 60, 64?
Yeah, I mean, there is, there's a formula that, based upon, when I was just doing figuring for my own, following during the other meeting as well. We use Keritech counting's old formula of three parking spaces for every five beds plus, they could come up with one space for the major, for half of the staff or the greatest number of staff that would be employed on one shift or some kind of language, which they had 17. And then your handicap parking spaces. If we did it based upon that, they had said they would have 17 on staff at a time. I think that came up to 62 or 64.
Yeah, if you remember a little bit of the conversation, you came up with that, I said, well, you know, it's all about the formula. If this, if this letter goes to the planning board, I didn't expect them to approve 42 either. I expected them to take the formula, come up with that number that you shared with us that day. And, and 84, if that's what they've got set up out there, I appreciate the willingness to compromise from 101.
Because their permit is for 101. The school of government, as I shared last week, thought that the recommendation that we were willing to work with until a final decision was made was to tell them, you've got 84 until a decision is made. And then we could go from there, say, don't pay, don't plant any.
101.
They said if, if we decide, you know, if it was 101 is what they were told, even their originally, their original plans showed 84. They said, you know, if we were willing to, if we want to stick with the 84, they said until this issue was resolved between 101 and 84 or lower, tell them, do the parking for 84, do not landscape anything. So that in case they come back and say, no, you still have to have 101 spots, then you can say park in the grass or it can be requested, you know, I guess, for them to pay. And school government thought that was, you know, a reasonable accommodation to deal with between the 84 and 101 parking spaces. Because I also shared last week, a lot of people on that list were in areas that did not have zoning. Some of them have been built for several years. And then there were a few I didn't hear back from.
Well, I promise you, all those other facilities, they wish they had been a part of it. I feel pretty confident of that. But 101, when I got the phone call from the developer himself, not knowing any of these other numbers, I knew 101 was an astronomical number to me.
And that was one thing that everyone agreed on last week, 101. Did seem a little high when he was that, that information that he provided.
So let me ask a question to you, Natalie. So from what took place the other day on the vote for 84, is there any, if we notify the Gates house that 84 was the number that was voted on at that meeting? And they say, okay, we don't want to, you know, they don't want to appeal it or anything or ask for another meeting or anything like that, and we move on, they just move on, right? Is there any mistake?
That wasn't the way I understood it. I understood that, that the only way to change from the 101 was to go through the process that they, the owners, the school of government, said that you need to change, amend the ordinance. His recommendation was that, that you amend the ordinance and then Gates house could come back and request amended to the special use permit.
Yeah, that is what he said, but that's not what was voted on. So I, I would think if the, if the planning board created their own, decided that they wish to create their own text amendment because they do have that right for our, to our ordinance, they can come up with one at any point in time to make changes. Right, and then propose it to the commissioners. They can do that.
We're making rules and changing them.
That's not, like I said, I did not know that this was all being discussed, you know, for full discussion, so I did not bring this on the book. But the planning board does have the right to come up with amendments to the text. And they can present it to the commissioners or the commissioners can present it to the planning board. And then, of course, it still has to come before a public hearing either way.
But the letter that we got from the contractor was asking about the 101 and you said you would respond back, correct?
The, the letter that I sent them, you're saying?
Well, yeah.
The final letter I sent, whenever I sent them the $650 back, told them that we could not approve their request and that they'd be notified when a decision had been made and what steps need to be taken.
So if, if, if you go this route, you're saying that the motion to go with the 84 is authorizing a deviation from the 101. That's basically what we're saying. Of all this stuff that we've gone through, that has, that has no, you know, we're making rules and writing rules as we go.
And we can still follow the, what had been suggested in school government was a good recommendation. Tell them, go with 84 now. And then the planning board or in another month, the board itself can bring back a text amendment.
Well, that's what, that's what I'm saying, I'm saying. Get it to the, let's get it to the planning board. That's what I've been saying all along. If it's 84, if we say that that 84 was the motion, then have the planning board consider it and make their comments and get it back to the commissioners so we can have a public hearing. You can't change the ordinance until we have a public hearing.
Well, I agree with that, but when you started this discussion this morning, you said not to mention a number at all.
Right, I said this.
But that's not, but we have, we have mentioned a number.
Okay, I stand corrected. And I, you know, if, if, I did not recognize the two to one vote at that particular time since we have five board members, board to be the majority. And I stand corrected, I stand corrected, I, you know. And having not considered that, you know, I'm, I'm saying, let's not give them a number. But now I say if the 84 is the number, give them the 84. Let the planning board have the 84. I'm not, I don't have a problem with that.
So what, what action do we take? What is the first thing to be, to be taken?
We need to send it to the planning board. If the 84 is the number that we, that we are proposing based on a majority vote at that meeting.
By rule, Mr. Chairman, by rule, with the verdict that was made the other day on the 80, the number being 84, it's my understanding they can proceed, the Gates house can proceed with no other action from the board on the parking issue. Correct, Natalie?
My assumption from me sending that letter, since it did not say any number, was that their assumption was to go ahead and work with 101 parking spaces in the letter when I returned the $650. Because it said we cannot fulfill your request for your change.
Because the reason I, the reason I ask that question, Mr. Chairman, is if we send, if we send the letter to the planning board to consider the matter, comments, their recommendations or their findings on the matter, and they send it back to us, somebody sitting at this table is going to make a motion of a number, it may be the exact recommendation, it may be a lesser recommendation, it could be a greater recommendation. So we're still gonna have to, at that time, we're gonna have to have a majority vote on what the number is. We've had a compromise of 84. Would we be wise, and we're, we're in discussion, there's no motion here, would we be wise to consider the, the compromise of 84 and move on?
Well, that's, that's a valid motion. Like I said at that last meeting, we said the number, I was looking at it as the number being 84 and the proposal was 42. But 84 was the number and that would be what you have to send to the planning board. You send the planning board that the commissioners are considering amendment of the zoning ordinance to have 84 parking spaces for a 70 day facility, for the assisted living facility. So that would be the number that would go to the planning board, not the number that's gonna be final as to what it's gonna be. Because when it comes back to the planning board, we have a public hearing, we will discuss it and we may even, as you pointed out, we may go with 42, we may go with 70, we may go with 84, or it could be something different. That meeting, that meeting could not, if it's an amendment, that was only for getting to the planning board.
I wanna, I wanna move on. It's a, it's a private entity building their project. They're doing their plumbing, they're doing their earth moving. They're not gonna stop their project. It started at 101, it's now at 84. I made a comment earlier that these people who have 42 and 48 beds wish they had 60 or 70 at least. I think, I think we should move on. We don't have to go to the planning board, we don't have any delays. They know exactly what they're faced with and they're making it happen.
But the issue is, based on the school government, the board of adjustment.
You don't think we can do that? Is that what you, you're gonna tell me?
Right, legally, you can't do it. That's been the decision, David Owens, is that if the board of adjustment has issued a special use permit that says 101 parking spaces, the only way you can change that is you would have to go into Superior Court or you can change your zoning ordinance to specify the number that you want. And once the zoning ordinance is changed, Gates house can put it, can request an amendment to their special use permit. That's the legal channel. Now, if we voted 84 parking spaces here, does nothing. You can't change the zoning ordinance. You can't change the requirements, what the board of justice has approved. That 84 is simply to tell the planning board that this is what we propose to change the zoning ordinance to, for 60.
Or the other, or the other scenario is Gates house picks up the phone and calls Natalie. We don't do anything. They pick up the phone, call Natalie and say, okay, we're getting ready to start on our parking lot design for the final, the final thing. We're gonna, we're gonna go ahead and do it. And Natalie says to the gentleman, yeah, on October the 19th, whatever the date was, we approved 84 beds. And he says, thank you, and goes on.
Still got a special use permit out there called 101. I mean, no one ever questions it. But you, and then when your level three inspector, whoever, goes to approve the project, do the final sign off, and he sees up there that you've got 84 parking spaces and now you're supposed to have 101, then you've got another issue at, at the end of the project. So.
And Natalie?
Well, he has been out there, Virgil was out there, I think it was Friday, and that they've been having discussions about power and about the pipe. And he's been out there with them and had some discussions. And Edgar was out there, or maybe that was, that was actually Monday morning, I think. And that they, in Virgil's opinion and Edgar's opinion, they shouldn't be worried about parking spaces right now. So they should not be holding up the construction of the building at this point in time.
Building, yeah.
Because all the grading work that they saw was still being done right there around the footprint of the building.
The only thing that I would think of would be where we're going to put the light poles and the wiring to it, other than that, that would be.
I don't say where we should be holding up anything. We should, we should get this to the planning board, let them have their review, and then we can come back. We can debate this until, until we're exhausted. At that time, but you, all of the debates and everything that we're doing is due until the planning board do their review because that's the legal process. You've got to give the planning board an opportunity to review, make comments, get it back to the commissioners. We'll have a public hearing and then we will make a vote, a motion and a vote on the number of parking spaces that we want assigned to the system. And the, and the, and the motion that was made for 84 parking spaces was and should have been that that is what we would present to the planning board, not to require Gates house to do anything different than what they're currently doing. But it's simply go to the planning board and let them know that this is what the majority of the board at that particular one time intends to amend the zoning ordinance for. Give me your comments, give me your recommendations. And they'll come back at that time and tell us, we go over with 84, we think it ought to be 50 or it should be 60 or whatever, or maybe 90, I don't know. And then we'll get it back and we'll go through the process. That is the legal channel. And once that's done, once the zoning ordinance is amended, then Gates house will be contacted and let them know that you can now request from the board of adjustment an amendment to your special use permit. Instead of 101 parking spaces, you can now comply with what the zoning ordinance calls for. That's the legal channel. That David Owens, and, and, and I sent you a copy of that. That is the guidelines that he provided. And that was the guidelines that was intended for that meeting. And, and, and this discussion now is simply to say, let's send it to the planning board. I was saying really, don't give them a number, but you're on the, I stand corrected. The number was voted on, let's give them that number.
Everybody waiting for me to speak? You know, I do, I agree with most of Commissioner Owens. I think we need to move on with this and, but I believe at that meeting that day, there was some urgency that people, that they felt it had to get done at that particular point in time. It was an urgency that, that we were slowing up the process. But maybe I misinterpreted what was said.
I made a statement. You probably verified. from the contract, that his grading for the parking area, if it had to be a hundred and one, and if it was going to be changed, he would need to pull off of his grading crew, and it could hold the project up for thirty days. Now, that was Mr. Buddy Kellman?
I did hear the same call.
And that was the urgency, because they need to know, you know, what the outline is going to be, and at that particular time, I believe previous county manager, interim county manager, had a letter that said that they could come back later. Was that in that letter? It wasn't in there? Did they request a variance?
No.
Okay, all right. Somehow, the understanding was that it was, they went ahead with the hundred and one, they could come back later, request the change, and so from that, we started making inquisition as to how we're going to make this change, we start with a variance, the variance cannot legally be processed, and David Owens looked at it, and it would have to go as amendment to the zoning ordinance, and that's where we are right now, but the amendment to the zoning ordinance, as I said over and over again, it has to go to the planning board. So, let's go to the planning board. If the eighty-four motion was valid, which apparently is, like I said, I was thinking in terms of a five-board, excuse me, vote, but let's send the eighty-four number to the planning board, see what they say. Planning board may come back and say, okay, or we think that's a good number, they may not come, they may come back and say it's not a good number, but then we can make a decision, we will then have an opportunity to make another vote. So that's where we are. Let's send it to the planning board, let's move forward, so that we can put this to bed.
I might be inclined to even think that any request for a different number, knowing that eighty-four had been voted on, that I might let the request come directly from the person building the facility, and because I want to move on, I'm going to ask if you will, if you would ask for a motion on that.
All right, I'll make a motion that we send this request to the planning board and ask them for their review and comments on amending our zoning ordinance to require eighty-four parking spaces for an assisted living facility as was motioned approved in our October nineteenth meeting. I don't, I would be understood that I don't agree with that number, but that was the number that was approved at that meeting. Send it to the planning board, that is my motion.
It would not be on group of the nineteenth, a week from today?
All right. Whatever that came out, then be the one that they-
I want to have a call in.
That is November eleventh, November eighth.
I said, how early?
Our meeting is November eleventh.
Twenty-ninth, I believe it was. I'm sorry. Count it to nine.
October twenty-ninth.
All right, I'll do a plan, I've got the nine right, but I didn't get the two. That is my motion. Second? All right. If there's no second, then the motion, the motion dies. All right, we'll be right back when we start. No changes can be made until you go to the planning board.
I might just start with those, and then we can bring it back at the November seventeenth when-
Yeah, I imagine David Owens has provided so much consultation now, that's probably where we are now. What is there to go to him about now? He's provided an outline.
What was the motion, I still say that the motion that was made was not made as a text amendment, and if there's a text amendment, it would have to specifically say, as our ordinance already says, one point two spaces per bed, or three spaces for five beds, or one fourth, or was it other, one space for every four beds, which is what some of the counties are using, for it to be actually passed and then inserted into, because when you do the eighty, if you're coming up with the eighty-four, that's still leaving the planning board with having to come up with the formula for future issues.
Well, one point two times, one point two times seventy is eighty-four.
Right.
This is good, a little bit, I guess, but you were getting it very too strong there.
You don't have to change anything.
My desire was to have a solution, and for them to be able to move off of a hundred and one parking spaces.
And that was my desire.
What do you recommend us do now, relax on?
Well, I ask a few questions because I want to do what's right, and I'm caught between the text amendment and the vote that was taken. And I think the vote from hearing Ms. Hoffer and Billy talk about the subject, it sounds to me that the compromise and the motion and the vote was made in the spirit of agreeing to a lesser number and a valid and substantial number of eighty-four, and that it should just move on on its own, is the way I see it. And Ms. Kessler is going to make a phone call and say, how many parking spots do I need to make? And Natalie's going to say on October the twenty-ninth, it was a vote of eighty-four and it passed, and he's going to put in eighty-four parking spaces, is the way I see it.
You've got your county attorney, our attorney's sitting here, and you've got special use permit, it says a hundred and one, and Mr. Owens just pointed out, you have a motion on October twenty-ninth, and said, let's have eighty-four.
The fact that the motion is less than the one oh one, shouldn't that factor in in some manner?
Well, your Board of Adjustment made the decision, so commissioners, commissioners by ordinance can't override a Board of Adjustment decision. That going to be a bit of a serious-
Wait, the Board of Adjustments, I mean, the one oh one, I mean, the figure is in our ordinances, the Board of Adjustments didn't come up with that, one point two.
But that's what the special use permit, that's how it got there, you had eighty-four and seventeen for the employees, and special use permit was issued for that.
But they didn't ask for any variance from that, and they, thirty days have elapsed since the permission decision.
And what is the problem with the original one oh one?
Well, there's too many, plus the fact we didn't base that on the correct information. The one oh one was based on using a residential support center parking space requirement.
Not a classification, it was just a-
And also, it was calculated based on the number of beds rather than the number of rooms.
That's right. It was multiplied times seventy beds, and you only got fifty bedrooms, so fifty bedrooms was giving you-
So, we're sitting here arguing over seventeen extra parking.
Well, we are, but we're also debating the, we're also debating, can we do what we're doing?
Can we do it legally?
Yeah, and Ms. Hoffer's comment is that they had thirty days to appeal, and that thirty days is exhausted, so we're not really dealing with that document that they applied for. Am I correct to that point?
That's correct to that point, and my, I was trying to make the compromise, but I was also concerned about being customer-friendly to the people who have individuals like that who are going to go visit, there would be enough parking spaces.
So, you're reasoning the one oh one is not valid anymore, and that was a thirty-day period, and that is a five?
Right, that's the reason that one oh one is valid, you can't change the one oh one because the thirty days have passed.
What was the-
They can't file an appeal.
Right, after, they were told back in April that they need to have additional parking spaces in addition to the eighty-four that they had put on their original, special use permit. They did not appeal it, they did not, as far as I understand, even question how many it was until they can't actually get their permit issued to start building.
We're trying to help them undo a mistake, ain't we?
Well, and the county made some mistakes as well.
Trying to beat them halfway so we can get this thing in the right.
Our calculation was incorrect, so we have some reason to make adjustments, which we've done.
We put some requirements on that, but going beyond what was reasonable to do.
And I read the memo by David, and basically what he's saying is it's got to go back to have comments made by the planning board before-
The zoning ordinance can be amended.
The zoning ordinance can be amended to accommodate whatever number is suggested or agreed upon.
Exactly.
Unfortunately. Which, it is what it is, I mean, if that's what you could say, if that's his opinion, which you have to do, he's an expert in that field, I mean, I would refer it to him there.
And the big, I guess the big debate now is actually that when the motion, some of, who was Melissa, I don't know if she went and watched, did you look for it, what the motion was?
I was trying, but I did not have a result back then.
It was that, it was actually a motion made that Gates House has eighty-four parking spaces.
And that's what they had on their drawing as well, but it worked out.
Were they satisfied with that?
But the whole discussion-
It's not made or haven't been where yet.
They haven't been made or where, but it needs to be a text amendment negotiated to the planning board.
Yeah, the whole discussion was about sending a request to the planning board, and the eighty-four parking spaces motion came up as that number, because we, the letter had said forty-two parking spaces, which is what Gates House was requesting, and so that number was not a good number among the board. So, the motion, in the spirit of the discussion-
Was to double it.
Was to double it for the planning board to consider not for to apply to Gates House or authorize the zoning ordinance to be changed. All of this is about one individual.
What is the, what is the, your board's feeling in regards to the planning board's involvement and their co-operation in trying to move in the same direction that we're trying to move? Or did you get feelings, or have you met with them, or have you talked with them? In other words, do you know that you're going to have opposition to going the way we're going through the planning board?
Haven't talked with them, and really, I mean, that's not, whatever, right, whatever they do.
You can still-
We just want to get by that legal requirement, it's that you can't take no action until planning board have a chance to make their review and comments. They may, they may tell us that, you know, eighty-four is too many, too little, they may stay with a hundred and one, but then when we get it back, then we can, as a board, vote on it then, whether we want eighty-four, sixty-
So, the ultimate decision is going to lie with y'all, you just got to roll that bit through that hood?
Exactly.
Change that bit through that hood?
Exactly. That's-
Anyway, I'm thinking, the way you managed, but I think I've looked at it too, that it's a-
So Natalie, even with the vote-
You've got to have that blessing before you go-
Exactly, you're sitting over there saying that it does need to go back to the planning.
I mean, it's not going to go necessarily as a text amendment, but that, because of the way it was worded, I did not think that that was the text amendment, and I don't think that was necessarily your intent, if I'm incorrect, please correct me, but you could take that, say this was the motion that was made, and then they could create a text amendment from that and bring it to us, as a recommendation, and then, once again, when the vote comes after the public hearing, when the board votes, they don't have to vote on what was recommended.
They have to revise their document based on what we voted on.
Right.
So let me ask this question. So it goes to the planning board, it comes back here, and we decide on, doing this purpose, we decide on eighty instead of eighty-four, just for the sake of saying something less than what was Hoffer proposed and was included? What happens to her eighty, that vote on the twenty-ninth?
That vote was sent before it could be sent to the planning board.
Was it made in that spirit, huh?
You can't, you can't-
Well, I'm not going to argue this point, yes, I understand that point, but the point was, if you read in the, most, a lot of the letter was sent to you, it said, I gave the application chain eighty-four parking spaces being provided, special use permit was issued, it concluded a condition that additional apartments must be added, but no specific amount was mentioned at that point. Yes, county made some mistakes, you know, they should have, I guess, told them then a hundred and one if they were going by the, I mean, you have to go by the rules, and, you know, at that point, so that was a mistake, how'd you come up with it? And I was just trying to move, Mr. Jordan, I hope I'm not misquoting you, but you were kind of insistent that we do forty-two.
Yes, and you're not misquoting me, I was, I based that on what-
Because you wanted a motion for forty-two, I believe.
Well, I thought that's what they provided, so that's what they said they wanted, they provided an engineering assessment as to what was normally used for assisted living facilities, and based on that, and I, and when Mr. Kellman called me, he called me, I told him that I would bring that to the board. I mean, calling back and telling him that, you know, it would be something different, and that's what I brought to the board. And so, yes, I said forty-two.
And you said forty-two, and I said, in a spirit of compromise, I didn't want to be obstructionist, but I was thinking about the people who have to go out there, who are going to be customers too, I mean, they're going to be paying the bills for the person who's staying in there, that they needed a place to park. I said forty-two was not enough, and I made a motion as compromise, a hundred and one probably was excessive, I split it to eighty-four, and that would be one of, one point two, which I ordered in states, it has to be, and I was going by the number of beds, that's seventy, that is eighty-four, so it's not a, you know, that goes with-
So there's a rationale behind it?
Let me ask this question. We miss, we miscalculated. The text, the text in the planning, if it stays just like it is, is the eighty-four correct? If it, if it stays just like it is, is the eighty four correct? The way the document reads.
Cause it says beds.
It says beds. And if that, if the calculation is right at eighty four, and the wording says beds. Then aren't, aren't we?
No, it's, it would be seventy seven. Cause you got fifty beds, the, the, the way it's worded anymore is, is you're gonna have one point two, uh, parking spaces per bedroom. You've got a seventy bed facility, but you've only got fifty bedrooms.
But in one place it says beds.
It said bedrooms. One point two parking spaces times fifty will give you sixty. And seventeen, seventeen employees on that chair, on the large number of base chair, that gives you seventy seven. Plus. There's a, I don't think it's handicap.
It's eight, there's an eighty eight requirement, I looked that up, that's not even addressed in ours, but I saw on the card token, it said one for every twenty five parking space. One eighty eight for every twenty five parking spaces.
It should add about two more.
Brown Jay water.
Yeah, I want, while, uh, here, uh, Mr. Godwin, if, Jack has mentioned this several times about needing. If we voted, or they did, on the eighty four, but then we get back to the planning board and the legalities of this. And you have negotiated in your daddy as many contracts and stuff. And I think Mr. Owens sort of, you believe it to this. If we sent down a letter and said the county commissioners of Gates County agreed on eighty four parking places. And give them, uh, the due process to appeal that, and they did not appeal, wouldn't it all this be known and it would be done?
I, I, I think that.
I was talking to Mr. Godwin, I didn't interrupt you. Well, the only, the only, only problem that I see, see with that is, if I'm correct in my interpretation. Is that the, there was a special use permit issued for one hundred and one.
Correct.
The appeal process, they, they, the, the permit was never issued, and they never made any demand for anything different. And their, their time for saying, well, we want X amount of spaces has expired, and the right up to that point. Then the problem becomes that, uh, and it seems a little. It's, it's gonna end up right back here anyway, and that's the problem that I have with it, it seems like that we're having to worm through a different wormhole, uh, with the planning board. Uh, because whatever the planning board says, you guys are gonna be able to make the ultimate decision anyway. But I did read, uh, David Owens's memorandum, and that if it's gonna be a, an amendment to our, a variance amendment to our, uh, ordinance. It has to go back to the planning board before it comes here. That, that is the way, unfortunately, that is.
You just can't just do it.
It would be very, I agree with you, Earl, it would be very nice if we could just, uh, and in the old days, you probably couldn't do that. Pick up the telephone and ask the owners out there, says, we, we've agreed to give you eighty four beds, is that okay with you guys? And run this over with, but we've gotta go through this extra step, it appears. Ready?
For them to make an appeal at this point, and so basically what you're saying on the foundation is, this gotta go back. This gotta come to us, doesn't it?
The way I look at it.
So, taking your advice and David Owens's advice.
Get it back as quick as you can, get your comments and then do what's more.
They need to make new application.
First, there has to be a text amendment before they can even do any sort of request to change their special permit.
Okay, so it needs to go that route first, public hearing.
Or they can submit it, but does not accept the money, and make it, he did say we can make it contingent upon, if the text amendment passed, then we could.
You gotta go to the planning. And get their comments, again, have a public hearing, again, have your, have a decision at this point.
So I think you, I think your motion is basically with no numbers in there, if you go back to the planning board. Because you guys are the ultimate deciders of the numbers.
Our motion could be.
Motion I just made a few minutes ago and did not get accepted.
But I, we could make a motion, uh, forget the Gates House. We could have a motion to ask our planning board to revisit. The whole, I mean, we asked them to revisit the, the whole, uh, all the requirements for that classification. And present it, and present it back to us, I guess maybe we could actually, uh, ask them to have, uh, with the emphasis on parking. And present, and present it back to us. I don't think we'd be, I mean, we know why we're doing it, but I don't think we would have to mention the Gates House in, in the process.
Our ordinance does not address assisted living in those terms anyway.
So basically we need.
Or nursing home too.
Nursing home, I believe, is mentioned in a definition somewhere, I believe, but it is not on the chart.
It's not the classification.
Right, and there are lots of things that are not addressed on that chart, and at the bottom of that chart, which is table ten point one, it does say that board of adjustment can. You know, make recommendations as they feel necessary or something to that. But assisted living is not even a.
We could ask them to add a classification for assisted living, and address the parking. And present that to the board and done with.
No, no, they never.
Well, if, if they would be willing to do that, we have to give them thirty days, but if they would address it at their eighteen meeting and provide, well, it'd be seven, no, you're right. It had to be December meeting, earliest, right?
Just for the sake of asking. They can have a special movement, if that you think.
Yes, but I do not know if they will, I mean, it's a week, all over a week away.
Well, good, I think they know somewhat where they, what their high end is anyway.
It's not it.
The word assisted living is not even.
Nursing home is not either.
Oh, it's not.
Not, well, I mean, looking at subdivision definitions, yeah, subdivision, I don't see it in the zoning either. That's where we are. And that's what we, uh, do, planning. You wanna make that motion then?
Yeah, I'll, I'll, I'll make that motion, um. Because our attorney is telling me that's where it's gotta go. Mr. Chair. I move that with this board, this whole board. Ask, uh, our planning board to create a classification of assisted living.
Well, no, I, I, nursing home, I do it both.
And nursing home?
I mean, I didn't interrupt you, man, Jack, nursing home, there's a delineate in here, but assisted living is not.
But nursing home does not have a specification for parking spaces, uh.
I'm just, I'm just saying that the definition is right here.
Okay, yeah, but not for parking spaces.
Say anybody for.
I move that the, that the full board request that the planning board meet and discuss. A s, a code for assisted living. And review the nursing home classification. To resolve parking for both classifications. And report back to the board, um, with any revisions. At their earliest convenience. And I would request that the county manager offer. All the knowledge that she has obtained on the, on the matter in recent days.
I will second that.
Okay, I have a question just for clarification, so that when it gets to planning board, when you're saying, um, classification, are you putting a definition?
Yeah.
Definition, and then any parking specification?
Like assisted living defined by boom, 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 boom.
Yeah.
Okay.
And you did get that that includes them adding parking formulas to the nursing home also.
Yes.
That's good, thank you for a second.
You got, uh, you got a second on that?
Look out for a second.
All right, the motion, second that we, uh, send a request to the planning board, uh, to provide, uh. Review and comments on parking spaces for assisted living, facility and nursing home. All in favor, all right?
Aye.
All goes there, all right? I need a break.
I need lunch.
All right, under a new business additions to the Gates County fee schedule. And, uh, you have that in your package. For solar panels and cell tower. Looks like Eden and Chilwan are charging fifty dollars per P O D. P O D is two to five panels. Bertie is thirty five cents per panel, them of a thousand dollars. Due to the electric permit required. Pass the tank, first five hundred, five dollars each, and each other five hundred dollars each. And the premiums, fifty dollars per P O D. And the Gates County proposes point forty, forty five cents per panel of a thousand dollars.
Cause we currently do not have a price scheduled for the solar farms.
Why wouldn't it go with thirty five cents?
I think that was probably because of the average when you included pass the tank and, um, for premiums, if you notice, it's a pod, it's two to five panels connected together. And this is what, um, their recommendation. And I know that, I'm doing planning this week, that's why I'm here.
I was planning the board. I just wondered, you know. I hate to be the candidate.
Oh, we're not, believe me, the pass the tank one, the last one they installed was ninety eight thousand dollars. For their last solar project. Their fees.
But how does forty five cents relate to first five hundred and five dollars each?
I think when they calculated that it was not close enough. And of course, ours also were not as big as the one that's currently being installed in Pass the Tank. There's been one that. The species is no longer here, that one has passed, she told me, well, I go, there's still one on Dominion. And there was a board of adjustment approved one at their last meeting, and then they have one on the agenda for this month's in the solar farms.
Is this something we want to send to the planning board and have them take a look at? When they come up with.
And this is coming out of inspections, because everyone's got to do inspections.
Does the planning board set the fees for the building inspector?
Now, the commissioners did. Commissioners set those fees and, you know, like we said, all the fees, but. This thing in terms of getting some info, because, I mean, we're gonna prove, we're saying that this is the fee that it ought to be. I have no idea, I mean, I know a thirty five cents is what's going on in Bertie County, but, uh. You know, to say what's reasonable, what's, what's fair, I, I take it that you got one. You got Eden to charge fifty dollars per P O D, you got per premiums charging fifty dollars P O D. And, um, I think it's got a different one. I mean, you know.
Well, I mean, if you look at.
I'm understanding this thing, that is basically what I'm saying.
If you look at Eden to Chilwan, that's per pod, that's two to five panels, so even if it's five panels in a pod, that would be ten dollars per panel. That Eden to Chilwan is charging. Now, they did not have a minimal, whereas we are recommending a minimal, but it's also forty five cents per minimal, per panel with a minimal of a thousand dollars.
Now, did we get a number, the gentleman that was in here last month talking about this solar farm, cause I hit Sunbury, we know.
I was not here, I was at, in traffic appeal. So.
Did, did he, the man that made the presentation last month, did he give any indication of how many panels it would be? I know it's gonna be about something up to forty acres or so.
Not that I would call.
Well, they're putting up a new one, Pass the Tank, on right there, where four and Bundy Road comes like seventeen, and it's a massive number.
That's the one that was the ninety eight thousand dollars.
Do we need a minimum at all?
Now, we're going based upon what Bertie did.
Yeah, David.
I mean, you're gonna get a minimum.
I move we go with the inspection's recommendation.
If it helps, we have a gentleman come by my office three weeks ago, works for Solar U S. What's not the same folks that are doing, but he is a, he's from very interesting guy, he was from down in Florida. And that's what he does, he, the candidate been looking, and he said, he's looking for, he was telling us for the main transmission line, they want acreage. And we were seeing if we could help them buy some acreage, and saying they would take acreage as far as up to a mile from the transmission line. And what the gist of that conversation was money to these guys that know object.
Well, because it's government incentives.
Well, he's saying it's coming, he's saying we got money, we, we can forward. So if, if Donald's consent is where, I mean, I wouldn't be concerned about it, from his conversation with us.
There's, there's a lot of federal money out there right now for these projects.
He was even offering us and saying that if we could find property for him, he'd pay us a percentage and all of that. We were looking at the G I S map for him, but I don't, we do have a motion to forward immediate address, then we can continue discussion.
Is that, is that.
I was, I was, I was drawing a motion, we'll need to discuss.
All right.
Do you? Billy, do you think it's a, I think we should have a pod rate in there?
I'm, I'm, I'm just thinking that the inspection department had done some research on this, I, I don't know.
No. My only question is on this, uh, two hundred, on the, uh, the antenna, co-locations for antennas. Is that two hundred and fifty dollars for every antenna that they put on there? And who is, who inspects it, does our inspection department actually inspect it, or?
Now, I think that's like, I've got forty acres here, and I got thirty five acres over here.
Well, this will be on a cell tower, this antenna.
And a, yeah, so an assistant type.
It's like, if you, if someone has a tower on the horizon, they're gonna build it.
Does our inspection department even inspect that, or is that F C C or somebody else?
They cannot get a permit from us to build it until they have an F C C number, because we had someone the other week.
So they still have to go through inspections before they can do anything to it?
Cause they wanted to get their permit from us before F C C.
For every antenna?
I'm not a hundred percent sure.
And, and I, I don't have a problem with that either, it's two hundred and fifty dollars still sounds cheap, but they're gonna pay millions.
Well, like in Sunbury, you already have a cell tower there, if they could put a, an antenna on that that already exists.
Yeah, yeah.
That saves something.
So, but they, now, the cell company is not gonna let them put up so many antennas up there.
Are we the only one that addressed that?
I think that's a new issue, I have seen that on, um, Delissar for planning.
For him to pick it up, he, he's seen it somewhere else too, probably.
For him to pick it up, he's seen it somewhere else too, probably.
Uh, wow. Two hundred and fifty dollars, I mean, that.
I mean, you just put up an antenna.
Yeah, well, my, my thing is, I don't see it anywhere else. And if it's only two hundred and fifty dollars, I'm like, I mean, we're not gonna, we're not gonna be overrun by solar farms. We might end up with three or four.
Well, same way with your cell towers, you're not gonna have that seven million, two thousand.
But it might save us from having a, a duplication of a tower if they could put it on a cell tower. And the two hundred and fifty dollars is a lot easier, cheaper than building this tower.
Right, I think also that, you know, you may be considering inspection time and labor that's gonna go into running.
Right, I know that, for him to go out there.
I'm just surprised nobody else listed it at all.
Because they have done it full, I mean, theirs.
There's something changing maybe.
Yeah, it's changing.
There's some, something that's happening.
Alright, what's the plan of the board?
Uh, we have to reduce my motion then to go with the building inspector's suggestion of forty-five cents per panel, a thousand dollar minimum.
That's what sell all of the, you're including.
The whole line item.
That's the solar panel, yeah, yeah.
You're not including cell tower?
Yeah, yeah, okay, the straight line item suggested fees with what is listed here, suggested fees for Gates County.
Second.
Motion second. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
I'll oppose nay. Alright, next item, uh, budget amendments four through seven. And, um, I'm managing one.
The first one is to increase the budget for the generator transfer switch project. Um, it was extra money, it wants to get in from other counties. Gates County is the one who's operating it, so we've received the money to purchase additional generators, transfer switches. So we just need approval to accept this additional money.
So what's he gonna do, enlarge, enlarge what he was telling them?
Just by additional, as part of the Homeland Security grant.
You can do each one separately or? Yeah, uh, I guess we can go ahead and do them separately. Alright.
Make a motion to approve.
Second. Motion second to approve amendment four. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
I'll oppose nay. Alright.
Number five has to do with moving money between salaries into our tribal, um, tribal allowance for central administration. As you know, I'm going to the school government, um, of course Melissa signed up to attend the court courses as well. There's not enough money into the tribal to cover the rest of those trainings. So we are moving, requesting moving some salaries, money into the tribal.
Alright.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion second. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Next was the school age childcare budget. Uh, they had an increase of revenue. Um, so therefore they are just adding additional funds to the budget and reallocating it.
Alright, make motion to approve. Second. Motion second to approve, uh, amendment six. Six, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
I'll oppose nay. And the last one, number seven.
Um, was again, we are handling funds for the Applemore Regional Hazard Mitigation Grant. Additional funds of ten thousand dollars have been sent to us and that will be used for professional services.
Alright, what's the plan?
Make a motion to approve, number seven.
Second.
Alright, motion second, budget amendment seven, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
I'll oppose nay. Alright, uh, termination of lease agreement with L M F Bollies.
You have a termination of lease agreement included in the packet what this is. The Young and Williams has been, as, who is the child support agency now. Counties are currently paying a portion of their lease and the landlord has agreed to enter into a direct lease with Young and Williams. And they wish to terminate the current lease with all counties. Other counties have already agreed to this. I do know Camden had their meeting Monday night and agreed. This way we do not have to pay right an extra check to the landlord. And the termination of lease agreements before you, if it is approved, then we would need to have, um, signature so that I can get this back. To Mike Cox, Pass the Tank County's attorney, and I know Pitt has already reviewed this as well.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Nice, motion second to approve termination of lease agreement, um, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
I'll oppose nay. Okay. Alright, alright, this, uh, raises up, um.
Mr. Chairman, we got, um, one more thing we need to bring up, I, I think. We've got a new planning director as of this week and we have one review officer and we need to appoint another review officer.
We have, if I may, we have asked that to be filmed in number seventeen's agenda.
Okay, uh, Susan Cummins.
Well, I had a phone call this morning asking me to come, but I shouldn't have come, but I was so glad to come. It turned out to be a great experience and I'm going on completely confused. Jack, I hate to bring up, uh, Mr. Chairman, that, I'm not gonna call up any discussion on our parking spots. But it was mentioned somewhere in the line, because I think I had mentioned this in business office, not today, but prior to this. When you give them the eighty-four spots, don't you think that you need to give them the size of that space that's there?
That's specified.
That is specified, I mean.
Ken McQuine.
A lot of people don't realize this, Kenny Jernigan does, Chairman Jordan does, and Earl Rountree does, dude does whatever. There's two different kinds of, three different kinds of vehicles. Those like this and then Hendrick's and my and Kenny's pickup. And you get, you get to a parking lot, most of the time I end up taking up, well, Hendrick needs them too. Take up two parking places, so our trucks are long and they don't fit into them. But it is gonna be taken care of so that they don't come back and we give them eighty-four. And, uh, I go out there and buy this wide, and so we got eighty-four. So anyway, I just made a note of that. Um, day before yesterday, this is something that has been on my mind, we're getting ready to, uh, bring on a new member, uh, in December. Uh, but it's been on my mind for a long time and I'm thoroughly convinced, I can't prove anything because it's something that really can't be proved unless you have a court order from the F B I to bug the room, I guess. Uh, but I think, uh, closed sessions and what the public is knowing. And I remember that, uh, Mr. Felton asked at a meeting a few months ago to make public some information because he thought the public should know it. Uh, and, uh, we're gonna have to really take a look at this closed session and make sure that you're legal. But the problem is, you can do anything you want to in closed session because you're not supposed to go tell anybody anything. And so it's a catch twenty-two. But it's gonna be up to all of you to be honest with yourself and honest with the public when you're in that meeting and say, no, we can't discuss that. And I know for a fact that in the past have been things discussed in closed sessions that are not legal to be discussed. And the reason I bring all this up, day before yesterday, the headlines in the Daily Ad Vacs was that Camden County admitted to making mistakes in closed session. Well, they can't send you to jail for doing it, it's one of those things probably Pitt can note that, uh, that, uh, you know, that they have laws, but there's no punishment for them. But Camden did admit, and John Morrison, he's the county attorney right there. Yeah, and he, I, I would consider him, he's one of the more experts on local government in the area. And he was the county attorney, but he admitted, yeah, we probably did. But it, it happens, it happened in Camden and I'm just gonna be watching it. And I had, the more y'all talked, the more notes. But I am so confused today, uh, as to why, like for Camden, Mr. Jordan would want only forty-two parking places. I'm leaving here today with the idea that at least the majority of you have agreed and will vote on eighty-four. Uh, and, uh, I'm, I'm, I'm just gonna leave with that and feel good about it. And assuming that no matter what the planning board does, you know you can vote on eighty-four, Pitt said that, we all knew that. So I'm leaving with the idea we're gonna have eighty-four. But what is concerning me was the fact that we were pressuring, uh, the building inspector and the station office. Uh, commissioners were pressuring them to approve things that they could not approve. And it's illegal to do that, in my opinion, and I'm not the attorney. But I think that I'm gonna keep a close eye on this because being S O B hasn't really bothered me that bad. And, um, I want to see that if we have any of you, it's okay to express your opinion. Uh, but when you got, you go in as a wing commissioner and Jack, I'll have to say that, uh, much as I think of you. And I thought today you were gonna get a vote on eighty-four and I was gonna run kiss you. But, um, you know, we can't, uh, you got that letter that you wrote in there to the Board of Adjustments, that was a letter, right? Uh, you got to be careful, I think. This whole process, if it had been discussed among all five of you openly to start with, we probably wouldn't be having to have this today. But I have come report after report and, uh, Chairman Jordan brings it up to the fact that he didn't want to be an obstructionist. All we were talking about is paving some asphalt. And I think that, uh, all of you should be able to know this, and I trust the judgment of all of you, if you're honest with yourself. Forty-two parking places for seventy people was just completely unreasonable. And Meridian was not gonna pull out of this project over those additional forty-two parking places. I mean, they were, this, I think Mrs. Hopple said they've already committed, uh, you know, I guess it's Whitehurst is doing the grading. Uh, but they were already committed to this, they weren't gonna pull out, they were just playing somebody. And, uh, they would have gone with a hundred and one. But anyway, I don't know why you did that, that's all up to you. But it wasn't, uh, they weren't gonna pull out because of that. So other than that, that's one I think had been saying, I wouldn't like, I'm sorry that, um, the lady was in here today about the grocery store. And I understand your position, I mean, the county commissioners can't do it so much. And a lot of people think that you can work miracles. But I cannot remember the man's name, and this goes for all of you politicians, and I'm not a politician, of course. But as one representative, and I wish I could remember his name, that way I'd, and, um, this year he ran for about a sixth term unopposed. And he's a Republican, but he ran, he's never had an opponent in either a Democrat or Republican to oppose him. And he was asked and quoted in News and Observer, what is your secret? And he said, my secret is real simple. Never pol, never promise that voters more than you can deliver, but to deliver everything that you promised. And so I feel sorry about the grocery store, but we're not in the grocery store business. Um, and I did say that, and this is gonna be several, I hope, but, uh, it hasn't been brought up, we keep changing from there. Beds to people, beds to people. It don't make any difference how many rooms we got out there, parking places are for people. If Jack and I are in the same room, he's got a family and I got a family. So when you look at this thing down the road, it's all about how many beds they have, how many people they have. And Linda brought about her most in there's on the city. Uh, the Carolina House in Greenville where Mr. John Willie was and my Mukalo is now. Very nice, clean facility. And I think it was the county manager mentioned in some comment today about this, she wasn't talking about this one, but these facilities that were done before Camden had these building ordinances. And, uh, Carolina House is really a nice thing, but weekends and holidays, there's no way to park. So when you come back in here to vote on this the next time, want a little bit of extra asphalt. Because don't you understand that once you let Meridian do it, they are never coming back to make that parking lot bigger. You will never, then you have no way to make it bigger. You can't force them to do it, and so you got one shot at that deal. And that's now, before it ever gets any further. And I had a long presentation that I never gave and it didn't make any difference. And I didn't bring that in, I'm sure Hendrick didn't, well, I didn't. Uh, but Meridian, we keep talking about Meridian and the Gates House. Meridian is only, and I'm assuming y'all know this, but Meridian is only manages these things. They, and they, and when I got investigating, I was given one telephone number. And I called that one telephone number and things started exploding. And I began to realize that this whole thing is a bunch of shell corporations. Now, a shell corporation is legal if it's done legally. And what it, usually they are done, big business, little business, they do them for legalized tax evasion. I mean, that's what evasion is, a criminal term, I guess, but avoidance is the word I look for, but that's what I look for, Jack, tax avoidance, right? That's not illegal. But Meridian is, and, and y'all have unfortunately have been dealing with, you got one or two people, but the corporate structure is just not there. It's a strange situation, but now they're building it, hopefully you're gonna get eighty-four parking places. And God bless you and you and Jack, and thank you for today and listen to what you needed for. And thank y'all for listening, Earl Rountree expanding.
Alright, Earl. Okay, uh, commissioner comments.
I'll listen to them.
Billy, you wanna start, Michael?
You don't want to hear, Earl, so you've got to be the one to listen.
I've been here all day, I might as well stay longer.
Well, Earl, I appreciate your comments. Oh, you made one word there which I'm, I'm sure that you didn't exactly mean it the way you said it. I hope you didn't, but I want to try to find something here that kind of backs up what you said also from one of our county officers in here. You said something about the commissioner of, period before the board of the inspection department are asking for special breaks. And I have a letter from this inspection department that says that was done. But you said from the commissioners and not all of us commissioners are part of that group.
Well, yeah, I meant you exactly, you know what I meant, there was some individual commissioners that not bonded on by y'all as a group.
Right.
Let's make that public record straight, yeah.
Alright.
Okay, um, you know, thank y'all for, well, thank you, Earl, for staying the whole time. Uh, but, but we had a good cry today, I thought. Uh, you know, when we have elections, um, I think it kind of rejuvenates everyone to maybe take more interest in their government. I hope that is the case, I hope we see those, uh, people back in December. Commissioner Jernigan is now on his short days. And I won't, I'll leave my comments like Commissioner Jernigan until the nineteen number, um, in a couple of weeks. But I do want to, um, say that, you know, my concern is trying to be, um, I want to be for economic development, but I also want to take care of people here and make it customer friendly as well. Um, I also want to remind people that Veterans Day is November eleventh. Uh, and there is a Veterans Day celebration at the Court Heights at eleven o'clock. You are all invited and be sure to spread the word with your, in your communities, in your churches, um, that we will have it here. Thank you.
Appreciate everybody coming and the one good stay.
Well, we did have a nice crowd earlier and, um, we can tell that there's some emphasis. I want to thank, uh, Ms. Batesmore for coming and expressing her opinion. And, um, I think she probably has some support out there. People feel the same way. And, uh, I think we, we see the need for that, that vibrant grocery store. It makes Gates County a better place to live, a place that's more attractive. So I thank her for stepping to the podium. It took a little courage to do that. Everybody have a good day.
Alright, I too thank everyone for coming. Thank you, Earl, for staying. Comment. Do appreciate, uh, the differences of opinions and discussions and that we can make, have these discussions. And, and still, uh, recognize that that's what they are, the discussions and to try to make a difference. Um, becoming, being disagreeable, but, but not in disagreement because we're all here for the same purpose. And, uh, so I, I appreciate the, uh, discussions and the, and also the oneness of mind in trying to move forward to help the county. I do have one announcement. You have a new package, um, a flyer for Mr. Milton Wiggins. He is a one-hundred-year-old citizen in Gates County. Uh, he'll be celebrating his one-hundred, his century birthday on November the twenty-ninth at four P.M. at TSCupher High, TSCupher Elementary School. And, uh, I believe in the past we have been given certificates or letters or.
Proclamation or something.
Proclamation.
Mm-hmm.
I would ask that the board would, uh, would authorize, uh, presenting him with a, what we normally do. What do we have this time?
A letter. The last one was a letter that got mailed out to them.
And put it on a nice stationery. I know that seems like a small thing, but it's, um, I know. We use this type of paper for, but, uh, but quality paper because some of them want to frame it.
What we can do also is that, uh, you'll send me a copy and I, I plan to attend that. And I would like to recognize Mr. Wiggins while I'm there over half the board, uh, if, if, uh, if no one else is.
It's actually Saturday. I have to thank you.
Saturday. I have to thank you. So, um.
And is this Mr. Wiggins? Is that, um, Gloria and, I mean, what, does he live on Sugar Run Road?
Sugar Run Road, right.
Jackie was, was his granddaughter?
I believe, uh.
Gloria's mother is the daughter-in-law, maybe.
You're talking about Gloria, uh, Boone?
No, Gloria Wiggins that works at Cooper. Doesn't she work at Cooper?
That's probably, I believe you're right.
Or Raymond?
Yeah, I believe you're right. That's it.
Drew.
You know about it, I did.
She told, she told Mr. Wiggins.
I look pretty good for a hundred and twenty minutes.
It was your first year. Sounded like you did the jet.
I'll, I'll make a motion that, that, uh, that we recognize Mr. Wiggins' century birthday without usual.
I'll suck it up.
Alright, motion second. All in favor? Aye?
We have been invited by the third grade, um, teacher, Laura Dickerson at Gatesville. They are currently studying civic, local civic, civic government. They wanted to come today. However, they knew we were gonna be in this room and there's not enough room for forty-five third graders in here. We have been invited on Friday, November the fourteenth at eight forty to come and speak to them. Uh, Ms. Dickerson has said that she understands that everyone is not available, that we're allowed between thirty and forty minutes. Total. Yes, sir.
So Gatesville Elementary?
Yes, at Gatesville. I can get with her and find out, you know, if they have specific questions they're gonna ask us or if she wants us to come in and, um, just tell what I do as county manager than what you do as commissioners. But if you can just let me know, um, by, frankly, by this Friday, if you are available to go and speak with them. That way I can let her know so she can prepare and make sure that there's room for everyone and everything. Because there's a lot going on at Gatesville that day.
I know what the Commissioner Jeremy Ben and I went last year to the Buckland, what? With, uh, county management meeting hall. But I think I might be available.
What was that date? Next Friday the fourteenth, the same day as their fall festival. So that's why it's a very short amount of time available that point.
Alright. Alright, running out, so we're gonna need a motion to, uh, go into closed session according to law. Act of one forty-three, three eighteen, eleven, A three, five, and six. Sub move? Second. Motion second. All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
All opposed, aye. Thanks. Thank you. Alright, any motion to come out of closed session?
Sub move?
Second.
Uh, all in favor? Aye?
Aye.
All opposed, aye. Okay. Alright, we have one item that we need to, two items we need to vote on. Uh, we need to approve the task consultant contract to be signed between, uh, the county and, uh, what's the name of the guest? Sub move?
Second.
Alright, the motion second. Approve that contract. All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
All opposed, aye. Okay, we do need a motion to, uh, request the county manager or director of county manager to contact board elections, uh, chairman and invite them and the director of the board elections to, uh, might be on December seventeenth.
November.
November seventeenth at seven P.M. for a discussion during closed session. Sub move?
Second.
Alright, motion second. All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
All opposed, aye. Alright.
Make a motion to recess. Till November seventeenth.
Second. Motion second to recess until November seventeenth, uh, seven P.M. All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
All opposed, aye. Alright.